Donovan? No, if you could just do me a favor and disclose the executive conference room door. Thank you. No. I'm not too sure what we would hear.
All set?
All set.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Pontiac Planning Commission meeting for September 8th. A call to order. I'd like to introduce everyone to the... My far left is Christopher Northcross. Next left is Planning Manager Vern Gustafson. My far right is Mona Parlov. And then Lucy Payne. And my name is Ashley Fegley. We have a lot on the agenda tonight. We have five items and three special presentations. The first three items will be public hearings. So, we will have a presentation. And then we'll hear from anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the matter. Normally, what we do is we collect all the comments from anyone who has questions. And then at the end of the public comments, we'll go through each question and answer them. Please keep your comments to two minutes because we do have a lot on the agenda. And I see there are a lot of people who would like to speak this evening. So, with no further ado, roll call, please.
Yes. Chair Fegley?
Present.
Commissioner Northcross?
Present.
Commissioner Payne?
Present.
And Commissioner Parlov?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Amendments to our approval of the agenda. I think we'll just leave the agenda as is.
You want to?
Yeah, we'll just leave it as is.
Okay.
And may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Commissioner Parlov?
Yes.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve the minutes.
And Interim Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
Okay.
Okay, and then next, our meeting minutes for review, August 4th, 2021. Christopher, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to add or change?
No comments, no questions.
Mona?
Nope.
Lucy?
No.
I do not either. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Support.
Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Vice Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
And Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve.
Minutes approved.
Okay, first on the agenda is 5.1 ZMA 21-03 zoning map amendment for address 25 South Sanford.
Okay, just give me a moment here to get our screen up. I know, I'm kind of unsure what's going on. There must be a little bit of a glitch. Apologize. Well, let me just... I can get started. I'll give an overview. Obviously, in the packet for members of the public, obviously, you... If you did obtain the Planning Commission packet, it's... I'll be reviewing the documentation for and presenting as relates to ZMA 21-03. This is addressed at 25 South Sanford, or better known as Purdue School. It is... The applicant is the Community Housing Network. The current zoning of that parcel is R-1, which is a one-family dwelling. They're requesting to go to a R-3, multiple-family dwelling, at that site. The... As according to the master plan, it is a civic and public use. Meaning that, you know, back in the day, historically, many schools were planned that way. But in urban communities, that efficient strategy isn't anymore of a good mix in regards to the future of that type of use. Because of, as we know, in regard particularly here in the city of Pontiac, with the Pontiac School Districts and closing down a number of schools and renovating and consolidating their school system to make... To offer great opportunities for their kids. It also provides a great opportunity for redevelopment. Ah, the screen is up. Thank you, Donovan. Next slide. If you look at in regards to zoning map, typically, you can see the red outline there at Pike and Sanford represents the area of where Purdue School is located. It is zoned R-1, one-family dwelling, which is typical here in the city of Pontiac. We use the lowest density identification as a one-family dwelling. R-1, four school sites, and also our park sites. And obviously, around... Surrounding that school site, as you can see, is a strong presence of further R-1 or one-family dwelling, which is identified in yellow. The only thing we do see there on the north side of Pike is some smaller type of C1, which means local business type of services and commercial to service that pickled neighborhood. As part of a zoning map amendment, it's very important that they do meet the various criteria that we evaluate from a very strong community planning and looking at our master plan, looking at our zoning ordinance, and ensuring that the change of use is compatible within those various categories. So, when we talk about... When we look at that criteria, we want to determine that the project is consistent with the goals and objectives, which in this particular case it is, with the current city's master plan of 2014. And it also is in current redevelopment. It's also follows current redevelopment trends in urban cities. Another category we take a look at is that the ecological and environmental features, and since this is a former school site that was developed years ago, those types of features of hydrology and geology and other types of natural features are no longer present on the site. The applicant, one additional evidence that the applicant needed to provide was to see if they could really develop that site into a... That 5.2-acre site into a parcel for a single-family subdivision according to the R1, one-family dwelling district. And it was clear that from that documentation that that demolition and development and construction costs would not provide a reasonable return on investment. And then also, we found that the development of new townhomes as being planned here are compatible with the uses that are allowed within that R3, multiple-family dwelling district, and would not negatively impact neighborhood density, traffic, or property values. We also take a look at in regards to other criteria items. We also take a look in regards to looking at the city's utilities and services. And we did... And we did reach out to DPW in regards to that information, in regards to mapping, and found that the utilities are sufficient to accommodate the proposed development of 76 townhome units without compromising, taking a look at the city's health, safety, and welfare within the community and also within that neighborhood. And we also take a look at the street system around it, knowing that East Pike Street and also South Sanford are major city roads. And plus, they also have adjoining local streets. We found that it could handle any potential traffic associated with the redevelopment of the Purdue School site. We also found that when we take a closer look at our zoning ordinance and looking at zoning districts, we found that the boundaries for the rezoning of the Purdue School site is reasonable in relationship to surroundings and also can meet the various dimensional requirements. And lastly... A few more, a few more, excuse me. We did... When taking a look at that, we also found that the R3 zoning district is reasonable from the city's perspective, from our review, from the planning division's review. And it does comply with the vision of what was found in our city master plan of 2014. And also that the... We also under... Understand that it would be... As it currently stands right now in our ordinance, it would be inappropriate to amend our zoning ordinance or text as relates to the R1 district to allow for multiple family to be located within that zoning district. So, it's best to use... Move it to an R3 to accomplish the objectives of this project, but also in regards to not going back and modifying our ordinance. And then that we by... The rezoning request would not create any incompatible zone within that residential area, knowing the fact that you have a single-family, but you also have now multiple-family type of residential that we're moving into a vacant or underutilized site. Okay? So, that kind of concludes my presentation. You also have a number of the applicants are here. If they have any specific questions, for them to address you as a commission, or we could open up the public hearing.
Okay. Is the petitioner here?
There we go, there we go.
I'd like to welcome Mayor Waterman to the meeting. Good evening.
Excuse my tardiness. I was splitting myself between a pension board meeting.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is CJ Felton. I live in Farmington Hills at 24581 Creekside Drive. Good evening, Mayor Waterman. Good to see you again, commissioners. It's been a while since we've been here in front of Planning Commission. It's nice to do this in person. Let me just give you a little more background on what our plans are. We first looked at this building, I think, in 2013 and have long thought it would be a great redevelopment opportunity. At that point in time, it looked like the building could potentially be saved with an adaptive reuse and then potentially building some new units on the site. We took architect, engineer, general contractor through there a few months ago. And unfortunately, the cost to save and repurpose the building is prohibitive. So, unfortunately, I hate putting things in landfills. And we've done some adaptive reuse before. But in this situation, it's just not appropriate for that particular building. Plans are, as Vern mentioned, to build 76 units of new construction. All parking will be contained inside the development in the middle with a large community room dropped into the middle of the site. And I think when we get to site plan review later tonight, you'll see that. It represents just short of a $26 million investment in the city. For those of us... Those of you who know our previous work, over the last 10 years, we've invested about $30 million in the city. Almost all of it in the Unity Park neighborhood. It's gone extremely well for us. We don't have any doubt that this development would be very similar to that. We did hold a community meeting in July. We delivered approximately 400... Hand-delivered about 400 invitations to the meeting to a broad area around the school. We had about 25 people show up. We presented some of the same things that you'll see tonight. And generally, the reaction was very positive. We did not really have any... Anybody that gave us much opposition to the plan. I think overwhelming what we heard from the residents around there, vacant blighted school building, that those are not good in any city and in any neighborhood. And there's really very few suggested uses for that site other than something like we're proposing. And so, I think people were generally fairly optimistic that this was a... That that was a good plan for the development. So, that's really what I've got on the overview. Does anybody have any specific questions for me?
What we'll do is we'll open it to public comment and then see if there's any questions anyone would like to ask. And we'll answer them one by one.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to reiterate that this item is for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from an R1 to an R3. Later on this evening, there will be a site plan review where the entire site plan and project will be reviewed. So, I'd like to open public comments. If anyone would like to say anything, feel free to step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Angela Rakowski. I live on Oriole in Pontiac. And my question to the gentleman here is if this would take place instead of what he wants to do to Washington Junior High. And I also want to know if these would also be the low-income housing that he wants to try and do in my neighborhood? Or is this normal family housing?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Melanie Rutherford. And my only question is, are they going to have a program so that the people that are currently trying to live in these properties can actually become homeowners in those properties? I think that's important and vital to this community, that we present home ownership so that we can get away from saying low-income housing and make it affordable housing and make it so that at the end of the day, that these individuals who currently live in low-income housing can actually become homeowners, so that the stigmatism of low-income housing can be erased. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other comments? I'm going to close public comment. Yes. Yeah, no, I'm going over them right now. Yeah, no. Would the petitioner like to come to the podium and answer any of those questions?
Okay. Regarding the first question about the Washington Square Project, that was a project that we entered into in partnership with Venture, which is Olson's Housing Division. We applied for funding for that in February with the state and did not get approval to do it. There was... On that particular project, there was also significant pushback from the surrounding community. And we are not going to go forward with that development. So, I don't know if that answers your question. It replaces... Washington is no longer going to happen. And this is... This is the next thing that we want to look at.
Okay.
Regarding the question on low-income housing, the financing mechanism that we use... We'll use to do this is the State Housing Development Authority's Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And I know people hear low income. And that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Much as affordable housing means a lot of different things to different people. We more like the word attainable housing. It is income-restricted with the upper area median income at 60% of Oakland County's area median income. Not Pontiac's, but Oakland County's. So, about $45,000 for a family of four. So, at the upper income limits, these are working people. In fact, they'll all be working people. So, I know there's stigma around affordable housing. And particularly, when you bring the term low income into it. But we've done this in... We've done it here in Pontiac. We've also done it in East Point. We've done it in Oak Park. We have a development that's getting ready to go in, of all places, Sioux-St. Marie. And it works. If it's properly managed and well-constructed, it's very... I think they become assets to the community instead of pulling things down. Now, the question on homeownership, and I know that this has been an important topic in Pontiac for a long time. There's no question that more homeownership would be a great thing. Fortunately, the reality of the situation is at the moment, construction costs... I don't know if anybody's been to Home Depot and tried to buy some lumber. Construction costs have just become exorbitant, as has labor. And we can't build and sell a single-family home for anything close to where it will appraise yet. Good news is property values are going up. And I think hopefully, see that continue to happen. And there should be some leveling out on construction costs. And I don't know what's going to happen with labor. But these are not slated for any type of future homeownership.
Thank you.
Our... Almost our entire development in Unity Park of 79 properties converts to homeownership at the end of their 15-year affordability period. But it just... It does not work for this particular development. Hope I've answered all of those questions satisfactorily.
Yes. All right. Commissioner Northcross, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a comment that I'm glad to see the... What used to be the Purdue Edison slash Eastern Junior High School property being redeveloped. And I would hope that in the future, this is speaking to our board down the way, the school board, which I was a member of for a number of years, that at the time a property is decommissioned, there is also a plan put in place to dispose or reuse or demolish that property in the future. We will hopefully be building new schools. And some of the older schools will be decommissioned. And hopefully, they will be, you know, in a very quick manner, either repurposed or used for something different. So, I applaud you for using this property in that manner.
Thank you.
I have no other problems with that.
Mayor Waterman, do you have any comments or questions?
Maybe just a couple of comments because I'm pretty familiar with this project. Also familiar with CJ Felton from the other projects you have done throughout the city, Unity Park, including others. So, we're well-known with what this is. This is a pilot. A pilot means payment in lieu of taxes. So, that means that as we evaluate these, and council's wanted us to do that, we also have to determine what the benefit is to the city versus giving up the taxes for such an entity. And I must say that this is a project in which meets that criteria. Because we have a city that has very diverse economic strata. We have a city that is growing in population. Even despite the pandemic, we went up a few thousand. And so, we want to make sure that we have safe, beneficial, affordable housing for all the different strata. So, that's why we're in a massive building right now. Because so much of our housing was old. We got rid of a lot of the blighted housing. And so, now we need people to have choices along all the strata. So, this provides strata, choices and a strata that we are going to need as that emerging demographic increases in the city of Pontiac. And so, that's why I'm in support of this. I have been. This building, which we inherited as part of the Phoenix Interdeal and had no use. It was just sitting there and totally, as it went in, there's nothing we could do with that but demolish it. So, we're very happy somebody comes along with an adaptive reuse that has benefits in many ways for the citizens of Pontiac as we're now doing this building boom. We have residential housing now. Several different projects are going along all strata that are the biggest building boom we've had in housing in 20 years. So, that shows we've got a growing population with more entities coming in and the need to supply that for all populations. So, I know you're rushing to the finish line to get to NISHDA. And we're going to try to help you get there. At least, this is one part of the process. So, we'll carry on. I just wanted to give that little color to the rest of the story as you say what's on paper here.
Thank you. Commissioner Parlov, do you have any comments or questions?
I do have a couple of questions. CJ, it's been a long time.
I know, more than a minute.
Did you used to wear glasses?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. It's been that long. You don't have your glasses on anymore. So, thank you for bringing this to us. And a couple of questions, some which will ultimately be saved for the site plan review. Is the funding already in place? Did NISHDA approve you for this yet?
No. Well, our intention is to apply on October 1st.
Okay.
We have a little work to do, including tonight, but we're hopeful of getting there.
And then how long on the turnaround before they can let you know?
We will know probably February.
Okay.
Maybe January.
Okay.
And then just to give you a timeline, the financing, closing the financing on these types of developments is complicated. Could take six to eight, maybe even nine months. So, best-case scenario is it gets approved. Maybe we can somehow start demolition before we get to winter. Might even be able to do that in the winter if it's... We don't have polar vortex and all of those things. So, it's probably from today, it's a two-to-two-and-a-half-year process before people would actually be living there.
Okay. That's helpful to know. The price points for those rentals, do you know yet?
Don't have that exactly determined yet. We ordered a market study from NISHDA. That's going to tell us what the market suggests is appropriate. We'll have that back probably next week.
Okay. Square footages of those units, do you know yet?
Yeah, we have one, two, and three-bedroom units.
Right.
The unit mix is still a little bit...
Up in the air.
Slightly up in the air. But it is... It will be 76 units. It's just a question of how it all comes together.
Okay. And the community building, is there anything specific inside of it other than a meeting place for the residents?
Be a leasing office. There will be supportive services offices that are available to all the residents. You know, as you know from everywhere in Pontiac, we have a lot of vulnerable residents. And even people that haven't experienced disability or homelessness, a lot of folks are just one bad day away from running into trouble with rent. And, you know, we've seen that during the pandemic, obviously. So, we'll have offices for that. And then there will be a very large community building that is available for use by the residents and also could be held for various community meetings. Look, if the surrounding neighborhood wanted to do Bridge Club or what have you, it's available to be used for that. And it... And the nice thing is it has to be free. We can't charge for the space.
Okay, good. Do you have an approximate square footage on that building?
Four... 4,000?
Oh, okay. That's a good size. And then property management, are you going to have someone living on-site? Or is it going to be remote management?
We will have... Plans are to have an on-site property manager who lives on-site. As well as leasing office that staff traditionally 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday.
Okay. All right. That's great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
Commissioner Payne, do you have any comments or questions?
Basically, just a comment. I thank you for coming to the city. And I think this is a great project for the city. I was invited by one of our councilmen to your presentation. And I was really particularly impressed with the way that the residents really welcomed this. I spoke with an elderly lady there that actually had lived there for years in that community. And that was one of the concerns that she had was actually that the building had been there so long and how great it would be for a change there. So, I was very pleased with that. All the questions that I had have basically been answered. I think your presentation was very thorough and explaining to... To us and the community in regards to what your plans are. I guess I want to know though about... A little bit more about the... I think I missed a little point with the mayor in regards to the pilot program and the taxes. So, this will be for how many years do you...
What are you applying for, 30-year?
We'd like 45. We'll need 18. And that's to be determined. Council has to decide if that's something...
I just thought I'd ask.
That's fine. Good question.
No, it's an important question. You know, the city has done some of those in recent years. It's a useful tool, particularly when... Other than the short time that this... Well, short in particular, the life of the building, the short time that Stevens had the building, this has been a non-tax revenue-producing property forever. So, it does bring revenue back into the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, pilots like a mortgage. When they applied to NISHDA for that, like a mortgage. And, you know, people will often stay in their home for 30 years. I've been in mine for 40. So, it's the same kind of principle. One of the things we're doing now with pilots, and before pilots had a bad name in the city because so many were so badly managed. But as they've come up for renewal, one of the things we've done through this administration is we've insisted on a development agreement. And as part of that development agreement, we... And as part of that development agreement, we say that you will have your code enforcement history reviewed and the city will have the right to have you change management at any time during that pilot that that becomes efficient. So we are now putting into those development agreements and that's what we've got to move fast on. That's what helps to get it through council, those development agreements, so that we're not stuck with some bad management for a property that has a mortgage for 30 years, 40 years in the city, that we have the right as a city to claw back if they don't abide by the principles of...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as far as the drainage in that area, did I miss that portion? Does the drainage support that?
This is just a chain zoning, this isn't a site plan. But there was, in regards to utilities, we did examine in regards to existing utilities of storm and sanitary and so forth. And they do have existing utilities relatively close. And I'm sure their civil engineer will get into that more in depth as part of their site plan review. And just keep in mind that the agenda item 7.2, when we talk about the site plan, we're looking at kind of a preliminary site plan. So all of the final engineering is typically not done at that time where we would then request at that, at a time when once they receive a preliminary site plan, they would go back and spend the effort and spend their consultants or get their consultants on board to get through all of the details as relates to going through WRC in regards to storm, you know, sanitary sewer, water, or also our city engineer would also get involved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I don't have any questions at all. Does anyone have a motion?
I would like to make a motion for ZMA 2103. Per the zoning, rezoning criteria found in section 6.804 of the zoning ordinance, planning division's technical review and public hearing, I make a motion to recommend approval of ZMA 21-03. The recommendation would be presented to city council for approval at the request of applicant Community Housing Network to rezone parcel number 641428455001 from R1 one-family dwelling to R3 multiple-family dwelling zoning district.
Support.
Roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Earthcross?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve.
Mayor Waterman?
Yes, to approve.
And Vice Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is 5.2, ZMA 21-06. It's another zoning map amendment for 1125 North Perry.
If you want to go to the next slide, thank you very much. Probably everybody's very familiar with this site. It is that triangle-shaped property on North Perry, just at Madison and Arlene. On the, towards more of the north end of Perry in the city of Pontiac, directly north of the site is the school, school complex, including the middle and high school. And then also much more various types of commercial uses that are along that whole area. The applicant is proposing to install a, to renovate the existing building that is there and turn that into what they call a warehouse distribution or what they kind of coined is kind of like a fulfillment center for the auto industry, for lack of a better term, kind of like Amazon for car parts, so to speak. When we took a look at the master plan, looking at the future land use, it is a mixed-use district of what we call entrepreneurial, a mix of commercial and industrial type of uses that is planned for that particular site. This land use category really emphasizes the ability to provide flexibility in regards to land use design, site design, and other types of features that encourages the reuse of various vacant and underutilized properties here in the city of Pontiac, a very strategic location as such as this site here at 1125 North Perry. The current zoning of the site is C-1, which is local business. And if you look at the intent of that district, it is planned for types of smaller housing sizes for smaller neighborhoods and providing services to that neighborhood, services and also a little bit of retail. It really is meant to be less impactful type of uses that are, that would go into a neighborhood, really kind of very different from what we have along North Perry right now. And as you can see, North Perry running on, it traverses the city, heading towards the north and then northeast and then also to the southwest. You find itself in regards to obviously strip type of zoning classification of either C-1, which is local business as this existing site, or C3, which is corridor commercial, which is more intense type of development. Within the C3 zoning classification, a warehouse type of distribution use is a primary or a permitted use, so no other approvals are needed from the commission as a special land use. It just fits in with in regards to the character of that type of use that provides, when I go back to that intent of that use and go back to the intent of what we're trying to achieve here in regards to the land use designation of being flexible in regards to uses and being flexible in regards to design standards to allow for a use of roughly 18 acres to accommodate that type of use, which is pretty low intense use. And you'll hear more about that from their applicant and the representatives here, which are here tonight, to answer any of your questions in regards to the type of business they are in regards to truck infusion, which seems to be pretty minimal compared to what we're thinking. We're not thinking of a large terminal freight facility whatsoever. We're not talking to another FedEx whatsoever that's being considered for this particular site. With that being said, I'll get into our findings, which are listed on the screen, relatively small font, I know it's hard to read, but let me just highlight some of the findings that we did see as part of this review and assessment for the commission to consider and also for the public to understand. When we take a look at our master plan, we did find that this particular project, as I described, is consistent with its goals and objectives of the plan. And it does allow for really the intent of this entrepreneurial district as a mixed-use district to really provide that ability to reuse of those vacant buildings. As remember, this was the old or former Pitney and Bowes facility, was developed years ago, so all of its geographical and environmental features are no longer present on this site. In regards to taking a look at the, how it could be developed as a C1 local business, which is the current zoning, we really have to take a close look in regards to understand the intent of that district, which I mentioned, which was to accommodate housing units for smaller households. So you're looking at smaller single-family homes of say roughly about 1,200 square feet or less. You're looking at maybe apartments that would definitely be smaller in size, at a minimum of ordinance of 600, and also business services to cater to those needs of that neighborhood. So when you take a look at regards to that demolition cost and the redevelopment cost, it really does not become a reasonable return on, reasonable return on investment for that applicant to consider that zoning the way it is for what it could be done and turned into and to allow it to generate jobs and provide services and to also, for jobs and also services to the neighborhood also, which is a key importance. When we took a look at the use being proposed as a warehouse distribution facility, it is compatible, as I had mentioned, within the C3 zoning district and it is permitted by right and would not negatively impact density and traffic and property values. And as we get into the site plan, they will, and they can describe in regards of what the intent of the overall 18 acres would be. When we take a look in regards to utilities and services, we did find that was sufficient in regards to accommodate this type of use of being a warehouse distribution facility. We do understand, we do know that North Perry is underneath the MDOT jurisdiction and is a state trunk line. This proposed development would not impact the ability of that street and also adjoining other major roads to handle this potential traffic. And you'll be able to see that in the future in regards to the plan is to use Perry as their primary entry, ingress and egress point for the vehicles that will be used for their operation and maintaining the other Arlene type of roadway for their employees only. We also found that the boundaries of the rezoning is reasonable in regards to its surroundings. I mean, it is relatively large site compared to other sites, but in that particular area, obviously with the school complex and others, it does fit in with in that kind of category versus a smaller strip type of development that is occurring along Perry Street in that location. And also the district is reasonable in regards to C-3 in regards to, it does comply with the vision of the city's master plan, which we had talked about. And then taking a look at, and talking about this more importantly was in regards, we evaluate in regards to, we take a look at our C1 zoning designation of local business and would it make sense to allow for a warehouse and a distribution use to be located in there knowing that the intent of the use that I mentioned would make sense for that to go into that zoning classification and revise ordinance to reflect that and it doesn't because there is associated increased intensity of uses compared to local business and services that would service just the neighborhood. And also this proposed rezoning would not create, or not create any isolated zoning knowing the fact of the North Perry corridor does have a good solid mix of C3 and also C1 zoning classification on that corridor. With that, this ends my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions of the commission and also the applicant is also here and also the prospective owner of that facility.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Waterman and members of the commission. Paul Reschke with Spartan Real Estate Group. I live in Shelby Township, 14218 Lakeside Boulevard. Perhaps just a little history of how we got to where we are. I had been working with a couple of the principals in the company and they'll address, you know, some of the inner workings of the company. But we had been, they are currently located in multiple locations in Warren. So we started looking for sites that we could develop and consolidate. And we were looking at new construction and we had looked through primarily Macomb County. And a colleague, relation of mine, said, you know what, there may be an opportunity in Pontiac. And specifically, they were talking about the racer site. So back in the era of Zoom, we had a meeting with Vern and Lynette, talked about the concept of that. For whatever reason, Bruce just didn't want to allow the intended redevelopment of that site. And so we were beginning a search again and this property on Perry became available, promoted as an industrial warehouse. So we looked at the property. Pitney Bowes, the group that was in there previously, was operating it as a fulfillment center, little bit of warehousing, distribution. And the building is a solid building, but it needs some help. You know, the exterior's starting to get weathered and for our use, the perimeter of the property, it needs to be secured. And so we moved along, we put this property under contract. Pitney Bowes has since moved out and we've been working closely with Vern and, you know, members of Pontiac to try and move this along. And some of the things that we know we had to do is we have to secure the entire perimeter because the nature of the product that they warehouse has to be secured. So I don't know if you can flip a couple of screens there, we have some renderings of some of the things we want to do. I don't know, is that in the package, Vern?
It's on the slide, but it is part of the plan commission's packet.
They have packets of it, it's very nice.
If you've seen that, we're going to look at, and we're cognizant of the surrounding neighborhood, for the multifamily in the rear of the property, nothing's really going to change for them. It's the rear of the building, their view of the property will be the same. For the residents on Madison, we're going to keep employee parking to that side of the building. I guess that would be the north side of the building. And so there's an entrance off Arlene and that will be for the car traffic, for the employee traffic. We'll use, since there will be warehousing and it creates an opportunity for a growing company to continue to grow their company and that's why they're excited about it. So when they come in here, they're going to create probably 25 to 30 jobs right out of the get-go. And the intent is to look within the community and hire from within. These will be, you know, solid warehousing-type jobs. You know, there'll be training provided, there'll be forklift operators. But the nature of the business, trucks will bring the product in, will use the main entrance on Perry. That'll be gated, we're looking at a nice streetscape for that. If you saw it, there's walls with real nice decorative fencing, landscaping. And so that'll be a controlled gated entrance to secure the property. And the full perimeter along Perry, Arlene, and wrapping around Madison will be secured and we intend to add a bit of landscaping and buffering to, you know, shield activities there and just further protect the site. So the intent is to put a little bit of money into this property. We know the parking lot's getting a little weathered and that's in our plans to resurface that lot. And then the building itself, painting and a few things in the future that we're going to do to that. But the immediate is to secure the property and do some upgrades to the perimeter and some landscaping.
Thank you. Yeah, the renderings that we have in front of us are very nice. The front entrance off Perry is going to be a huge improvement. Well, this is on the agenda as a public hearing, so I'm going to open it to public comment and do the same thing before, where we just collect the questions and then if you'll be able to answer them, I appreciate it. So if there's anyone who would like to make any comments, please approach the podium.
Angela Rakowski on Oriole in Pontiac. And I was just curious if it's like a 24-hour facility, because my daughter just recently purchased a house over there, so I'm wondering about the noise and the traffic. She's, her house is right on Madison.
Okay.
So there'll be 24 hours with everything going, the gate noise, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, if there's no other public comments, I'm going to close public comments. Will it be a 24-hour facility or what will your hours be there? I think it's limited in the zoning ordinance, isn't it?
It is, but they, to a certain extent, I mean, some businesses are, depending on if it's in the interior of the building, they could be 24-hour. It's just in regards to certain number of truck traffic and stuff like that might be limited. But I believe that they have plans, they have limited hours, if I remember correctly from our conversation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth Salamagic. I'm part-owner of the business itself. I could give you guys a brief review of the operation itself. To answer the question, it is scheduled, we do have scheduled deliveries. So a lot of our freight that will be coming into the warehouse is anywhere from 9 to 5. But we do have people in the building up until 8:00 PM or whatnot, just sorting and, you know, packing and whatnot. you know, packing and whatnot, getting ready for the next day for trucks coming to pick up freight.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll go to the commissioners now. Commissioner Northcross, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, a little bit more. This is a warehousing operation, so you're receiving shipments in and then you're redistributing those shipments for delivery. Am I correct?
Correct. So, our top three customers are GM4 and Chrysler. So, what they do is we have our partner carriers bring in freight from all throughout the United States and also Canada as well. That's why we need it fenced in. We're fast approved, so we do cross-border shipments. So, we have to make sure that nothing is able to get on or off that truck when it's crossing the border. So, what happens is we bring freight in bulk from all throughout the country and we store it, warehouse it in that facility. And once our customers, it could be anywhere from 30 to 60 days, once our customer needs that freight, we put on smaller spinner vans and deliver it to their manufacturer where they need the parts.
And I think I heard you say about 25 to 30 employees will
Correct.
be at that site.
Yes.
Okay.
Forklift drivers, just people to manage freight warehousing. Also, we have staff onboard that needs to, security guards and whatnot, that will monitor and, you know, assemble the freight as well. Because we'll do some, what happens is a lot of, a lot of parts have recalls, right? So, what we do is we fix them up and then we ship them back to the dealers.
So, are you doing assembly onsite?
Just light.
Light, light, light assembly, reassembly?
That's what we, that's our goal, is to establish light assembly.
Okay. So, you're, I heard that you're hoping to expand, just how large are you hoping to get?
As far as the
You're ultimately, and how many
We're currently
Employees?
We're currently at about 80 employees. So, our goal is limitless, but we're looking at least higher within the local area, a lot of local residents that, this job is time-sensitive, so everybody needs to be able to get in and out of the building at a decent time to get the freight out. It's all time-sensitive.
Oh, yes, okay. Yeah, I was just looking at the parking lot, a huge parking lot there, huge covered area. Has there been any thought about water retention? And I think that parking lot, that building dates back to, what, the 50s, the 60s, I think it was, late 50s, early 60s?
Yeah, we have surveys that we did and the sewage is, it should be fine. We will be investing quite a bit of money in facelift, as you guys have seen in the renderings. Not only that, we'll be repaving throughout time. For time being, to get into the building and get operations started. What we'll do is we'll patch up some of those, you know, that parking lot, it's not the best, we're going to revamp it a little bit, but throughout time, I'd say about a year to two years, we'll probably invest about a million dollars in repaving the whole surface.
Okay. I was just wondering if, that was one of my reasons for asking, how many employees? If you're not looking at an extraordinary number of employees, you don't need all that parking lot. Maybe give some consideration to green planting.
It's more so more than warehousing. It's 110,000 square feet of warehouse.
Yeah.
That's what we're focused on. As far as the parking, we will have, we will be staging short-term, you know, trucks and trailers as they come in and deliver. So, we do need some, some space to have trucks come in and out, turn around. It's about two to three hours wait time on unloading and reloading the unit. So, that, that's decently sized parking lot for operations.
Okay, I was just wondering if you may give some thought to maybe some green planting things and absorption of the water as opposed to the hard asphalt kind surfaces and stuff, if there's, if that's an opportunity.
Have you, have you had a chance to look at the rendering?
I did and I thought I saw that the parking lot was basically going to go back into the same area. Now, maybe I looked at that wrong, because I was
Well, a lot of the surrounding, the parking lot will be mostly landscape, but as far as adding more
Or even subtracting, I was thinking.
Right. So, a lot of that would be, the surrounding area would be fenced and be landscaped, so it'd be covered up. As far as the parking lot itself, going into the property itself, I don't see us, you know, doing any more landscaping than there really is right now at this moment.
Okay, okay. I guess the only other thought would be the, someone already mentioned that the 24-hour operation and the number of trucks coming in as you get larger and having to make a left turn, assuming they're coming off of M59 on Perry into your main entrance.
Yeah, our trucks, our trucks wouldn't be going anywhere towards downtown, they'd be going directly towards the highway. It's about 1.2 miles from the major highway.
Okay.
So, it'd be, we have a designated entrance, exit, so trucks, larger trucks. And these are trucks that aren't going to be coming in, you know, quite often as we have the little spinner vans, such like Amazon. Those are going to be more often in and out. And it's going to be on a time, like I said, it's most of our trucks bring in freight anywhere from nine AM to five, and then we have employees inside the warehouse that are sorting the freight. So, when I load them, try to get, drivers don't like waiting, so, and the more, we have to actually pay them to wait to get unloaded. So, that's cost-effect, you know, cost-effective to us. But what we would do is unload the freight because we have that warehouse space, get the truck out of there, and then we have our employees inside the warehouse that would sort and store the freight, you know, label and whatnot and put in the system. Whenever the customer would call us and need that, we would load the spinner vans and they would go out and deliver it directly to the manufacturer.
Very good, very, you're very observant. I mean, you're right here in the heart of Oakland County, geographically, literally. So, a good location for that type of operation you're looking at. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome to Pontiac.
Mayor Waterman, do you have any comments or questions?
Only to say that a fulfillment center for automotive parts, that sounds good to me. I just like the sound of that. But anyway, I think that's a great use of that property and I like the renderings in terms of what it will do to uplift that property and I think that's good. I know you came here for racer trust property, there's not much, there's nothing left anymore. We started with the biggest inventory in the world
That's right.
of unused, vacated General Motors properties and we're now down to one small parking lot. So, I'm glad you found something else instead, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Parlov?
Your name is Kennen, correct?
Correct.
I used to work with a gentleman named Kennen. Thank you for considering Pontiac and Paul, is that right? For suggesting that as well, your coworker bringing it up and having an open mind. This is a pretty good place to be, as you're discovering, I'm sure, we're in the center of everything. So, thank you for bringing this to us and I wish you great success.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Payne, do you have any comments or questions?
No comment. I mean, no questions. I do have a comment. And the comment actually is, is that, first of all, again, welcome to the city of Pontiac and that is going to be a really beautiful site, if it's what I'm seeing here, rather than passing by and seeing things the way that they are now. So, I appreciate you coming to our city and actually looking at it to try and make it a great place to be and present the buildings the way that you're doing because I really think that keeping up with your buildings and doing things nicely help to drive your business and I appreciate that part of that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I'd like to make a comment. A lot of what we do as a company, we believe in looking good, attract more employees.
Exactly.
Our focus on, is, one of the topics here tonight was housing, right? So, we want to make jobs, create jobs, job creation for people to be able to afford those houses, right? So, that's our goal, is to, it's really just to hire and also, majority of the whole purchase of this property is to expand because of the space it has and that's what, that's what we want to do here. Obviously, we like to hire locals rather than hiring somebody that's 30, 40 miles out and whatnot, that would take a while to get to, because it's time-sensitive stuff.
Right. And should we hold you to hiring within the city?
What's that?
Should we hold you to hiring within the city to make sure that our residents
Actually, we had some discussion with Lynette. I know you have a job portal and we're going to work with her to post jobs and, you know, do the best we can to hire from within and work together.
Wonderful.
That's our intent is to work together to make this successful.
Call the jobs pipeline.
Okay.
So?
Thank you.
I think this is going to be a great building for your business. Thank you for coming to Pontiac and thinking of us. May I get a motion?
I would like to make a motion for ZMA 2106. Per the rezoning criteria found in section 6.804 of the zoning ordinance, Planning Division's technical review and public hearing, I make a motion to recommend approval of ZMA 21-06. The recommendation would be presented to City Council for approval that the request of applicant Horizon Exchange and Management Incorporated to rezon parcel number 641421226004 from C1 Local Business to C3 Corridor Commercial Zoning District. Support?
Support. Your call.
Very good. Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
Mayor Waterman?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
And Vice Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
Five zero, motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, next on the agenda is 5.3 ZMA 21-07. It's another zoning map amendment for the address located at 761 West Huron.
Okay, I'm up. I think everybody knows this iconic building that's been sitting there for a little bit of time there on
West Huron.
761 West Huron. We have, as relates to, we go to the next slide in regards to the master plan, it does show the plan as neighborhood commercial, where we talk about within that intent of that land use classification is to provide adaptive reuse for existing structures, providing those jobs and services for adjacent neighborhoods. And also, more importantly, it also talks about the vertical type of integration of those uses being either retail and commercial, which is the intent of what is being planned on the north end of the site within that existing building. When we take a look at the zoning map, it is, you can see it outlined in the red dashes. It's roughly approximately about six acres and it was, the way that our zoning map showed it, was the north end half of it was zone C-1 and the southern half is zone P1 Parking, which is, kind of makes sense in regards to what was going on back there at whatever time and also probably at one time, it was two parcels and it was combined and the zoning map was never updated, so that was probably why it never got the one continuous zoning designation on that parcel. As you can see, the same thing is occurring over at the post office site, which is directly to the east. It is within that west corridor. You do find it in regards to, there is considerable amount of C1 and also C3 along this section of West Huron with kind of spots of, I would call them spots of multiple family that's located directly on the frontage of West Huron. And then behind it, you do see strong R-1, meaning one-family dwellings, R-2 representing two-family, and then also R-3 representing multiple families that are relatively close. And then also, directly to the, not directly, relatively close to the east of that, you also get into the Seminole Hills Historic District there that you can see, it's not highlighted, but you can see that road system that represents that Seminole Hills Historic District in that location. When we, again, when we started looking at the findings, we did take a look and we, what we found was is that the development project, let me just back up one moment. When we took a look at the zoning as relates to what they are proposing, is the southern half of the site is being planned as mini warehousing. So, to allow for mini warehousing to be located within, obviously, it can't be located within a P1 Parking, it's not permitted. It's not permitted within a C1 designation. So, the applicant is looking for a C3 classification to allow for mini warehousing type of use to be located at the southern portion of that site. As you remember, at our last planning commission meeting, we did table the special exemption permit or special land use approval from this commission until we got through the zoning recommendation. So, we're not here tonight as relates to the special land use designation, we're here just in regards to the rezoning classification. And we'll also, at the same time next month, finish up, because we tabled that item, if you remember correctly, that we would address that item as a special exemption permit and getting review and approvals or, and what the flavor of the commission would be as regards to a special exemption permit and also site plan review. Okay, just to be clear in regards to what we are doing here tonight as relates to strictly planning and zoning, as it relates to our master plan, as it relates to our zoning ordinance. We did find that the plan where, is consistent with those goals and objectives of that C1 or that C1 District or that Neighborhood Commercial District, where it talks about being in Pontiac's central location, the location of Pontiac is centrally located within not just the site, but also the location of Pontiac within the county as a central location, attracting new office, retail and also business service uses. Which, if you look at a mini warehouse, you can kind of classify it as both a personal and business service. I mean, it's one thing that, it's not going to be used as a continuous type of comparative retail or convenience retail or convenience commercial, it's more of a service that's being provided. So, in my mind, that's how I kind of classify a mini warehouse as part of those type of classifications of land uses. Secondly, it does provide, as we know, that on the existing site, largely paved area with a bank, five-story
What's up, guys? Welcome back to the
Obviously, any of its natural features are long gone and no longer present. When we take a look at the, you know, how the applicant could take that current C1 and parking designation, it really doesn't, you can, you can, it's very clear that the redevelopment and the construction costs would not provide any reasonable return on investment by keeping it in that current zoning classification to follow those types of uses that would be allowed, particularly within the P1 Parking Zoning District. The redevelopment of a mixed-use office retail is compatible with the uses within C3 as I had identified and would not negatively impact neighborhood density or traffic or property values. And also, the mini warehouse would require a special exemption permit approval from the planning commission, which gets into a deeper dive in regards to the use itself and the site itself as relates to that approval. Also, we found that the site itself is serviced by all of the public facilities and also services. Same thing with the road system. Obviously, West Huron is, again, under the jurisdiction of Michigan Department of Transportation. It is a state trunk line and that proposed development would be utilizing that roadway for ingress and egress to that site with no, no other types of access points on that site to adjacent neighborhoods. And then also, it would then join other adjoining major streets to handle any potential traffic. The boundaries of the rezoning is reasonable as relates to that relationship and it does meet the dimensional requirements as a, as properly zoned C3 zoning district would. We also found that it does, in our review, does provide, from our perspective, comply in regards to taking a look at ordinance, taking a look at our future land use plan and meets with, from a planning division standpoint, does meet those objectives and we do see that does apply and make a recommendation to approve. It would be inappropriate to amend the C1 District that would allow for mini warehousing to be located within that type of zoning district, as we talked about, very similar to our friends at 1125 North Perry, by looking at mini warehousing to be located within that district, knowing the fact it was planned for housing and also through a zoning testament would not be appropriate or inappropriate at this time. And the proposed zoning to a C3 would not create an isolated zone within the West Huron Mixed Use Corridor. Okay? I mean, we're happy to answer any questions the commission may have, and also, the applicant and others are here to ask, answer any of your questions also.
Okay. Would the applicant like to approach the podium and add? Welcome back.
Good to see you. Good evening. My name is Anthony Di Bartolomeo, 1885, Hunter's Ridge, Bloomfield Township. I work for Ross and Barr. Mr. Di Bartolomeo is my uncle and my boss. He couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately. I'm sorry, he was actually at a mini storage convention. He was in Las Vegas, so I'm sure he's really
Oh, yeah.
I feel bad for him, but we did have a meeting last Thursday evening with some of the neighborhood folks, and kind of fleshed out some of the topics we talked about last time. I think we're in a better place, in a better understanding of what, you know, we're trying to achieve here, and being from the area, we're, you know, local, and like we talked about, we have the buildings downtown, and so we've got some great plans. John's here, he can help too, and, you know, anybody that has any questions, I can answer them, and we can go from there.
Okay. Well, tonight on the agenda is just the rezoning, we're not doing the site plan or anything like that. I think that's, what, next month?
Next month. So any specific questions? I was, we've been, our, myself and Donovan Smith have been working quite diligently with your architect, and also with the fire department, and kind of reviewing this to ensure, you know, making sure that health, safety, and welfare is brought into that overall design of that site. But that, like I said, that will be addressed in October.
Okay.
We'll be here.
Thank you.
And this is a public hearing, so I'm going to do the same thing again, I'm going to open it up to anyone in the public who'd like to speak about this rezoning. If you'd like to speak, feel free to walk up to the podium and state your name and address, and
I'm Alita Reyes, I live at 125 Ottawa. I was just wondering, what are going to be the hours? Since the back part is in a neighborhood, what are the hours? I have a storage unit in Houghton Lake that's open 24 hours, but I also have one in Houston, in, I mean, excuse me, in Dallas, Texas, which is only open from 8:00 in the morning to 10:00. And when you've got neighbors, you want to keep that noise down, so I was just wondering, what are the hours?
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
Angela Rakovsky on Oriole. The building is right at the end of my street, so in regards to that parcel that's right there, when I was young, there was two houses there, and they moved those houses over to Josephine and made that the green space. And also, when I was young, that fountain worked, and I've always wanted to see that fountain come back. We also have a bus stop right there, where people usually have to sit and wait for their bus, because there's no benches. So if we do have some kind of business occupying that space, I would like to see us get something out of it, whereas maybe my fountain could work again, that I've always loved since I was a kid, and we could have some benches for the people waiting for the bus, or just for us neighbors when we're out walking our dogs or something. So it just doesn't go to waste. Thank you.
Hello, Chris Taylor, 31 South Genesee. I guess what you're saying is the, if I'm understanding, that the nitpicky part of all this will happen in October.
Correct. Correct. And again, this is a recommending body, so we review the applications and determine whether or not we would approve the rezoning, but this will still go in front of the city council for final approval.
Right. So, you know, I mean, the questions are vast, from a resident's standpoint, with this kind of development, particularly since my property butts up against their property. So I guess maybe a relative, a relevant question would be, who is responsible for the current cyclone fence and parking buffer, which consists of a steel I-beam stuck into the ground and wooden slats through the first 10 houses on Genesee, which I believe there's 10 or 11 homes from the top of Huron down until the school property begins? So that would be one question. Who is responsible for that cyclone fence? To me, when I went to go look and survey it, it was built all at one time and not by the residents. It's obviously a commercial installation. So, you know, we're looking to get rid of this concertina wire fence, cyclone fence, which is however years old, rusted, and this rotten wood, along with the steel I-beams. At this meeting, this informal meeting, it was proposed by the developers that they perhaps maybe create a buffer with crushed stone by 12 inches, build their fence, and then there's another requirement for five feet after that with crushed stone and trees. So, you know, my question is, what happens to this 12 inches? Who's responsible for it, and how do you gain access to it? Is the current owner proposing a yearly pesticide or herbicide wash to get rid of overgrown trees, which have occurred over the years, with the existing fence? So obviously, you know, I realize that this gentleman who owns the property now, you know, I don't think you should pay, as it were, to, you know, to pay for the sins of others, you know, in the past, but clearly, this whole fence line thing is a big deal, because
We probably won't have those details till next month.
Right, I realize, okay. So, and I'd like to know what the zoning or the planning commission is requiring the fence material. There's some questions about what this fence is, the height of it, you know, last time we spoke, there was a six-foot on the drawing, then there was the recommended eight-foot. So my question is, are for sure building an eight-foot fence from our meeting I got, what are the materials required by the city to build this fence? Is it masonry? Is it wood? Is it plastic? Is it what? And, let's see. I guess that's it. I guess I'll have to wait until, you know, October to really go through all these other things. The lighting?
Yeah.
Also, the access to information is piss poor. We have no information as homeowners, what is going on, you know? The gentleman brought some pictures with him, but they were inadequate, blurry, they did a little bit of, they hired a landscaper to identify the trees, and I feel that those tree identifications were holding this, you know, it was a landscape guy, end of quote, who determined what the trees were. And I don't think that's accurate. I think in order to determine what the trees are, somebody needs to hire an arborist, because, you know, a lot of those
And again, we have six things on the agenda, we only have like two minutes per person, and none of this is going to be determined tonight.
How do we gain access to high-quality versions of these drawings? You know, so we can see what's going on. I mean, the last time we were at this meeting, the image was, again, you could barely read the writing, it didn't list any of the, you know, it's not that we're not, we're not asking for, you know, it to be dumbed down for citizens, you know?
Understood.
I mean, it's drawn in CAD. I gladly take that CAD file, you know? So I just, that's what I would ask.
Okay.
Some better images from the city
I understand.
Or the developer. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening again, I'm Melanie Rutherford, I live at 1018 Argyle Avenue in Pontiac, Michigan. The need for storage is real in this community, the need for buildings like this to actually create a place where people can keep their stuff safe is needed in this community. They've already voted down the previous one that they wanted to do downtown. What makes this so great for our city is that there are people who are in transition, if you will, that actually have to move because they can no longer live in the houses they have because of flooding, or because of damage in their home. They have to have a place that actually is affordable, reasonable, in a sensible location. At the end of the day, we all win when we buy into that, and we stop looking at the, I'll say, minimalized problems, we can maximize the results. There are citizens who absolutely have to have a place to have their stuff stored. So at the end of the day, I hope, and I employ you, that you look at that from the grander scale, and we're not taking away from the homeowners, but we also need to talk about the renters as well, and so they need a place to keep their stuff safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Councilwoman Schramsky, and we did have a meeting, and the owner was very amenable to any changes, and that will, as you've reiterated several times, be next month. And most of my residents are not opposed to mini storage, it's just details, trees, the buffer, but I do not have any problem with it being rezoned, and I don't think most of my residents do, to have it be rezoned to C3, because anything they do after that will require a special exemption permit for mini storage or anything like that, that aren't ordinary C3 uses. So I don't have a problem with rezoning at all.
Thank you. All right, if there aren't any other public comments, we'll close public comments, and then see if we can get some answers for a few of these. Most of these will be answered next month with the site plan.
Yeah, I would say in regards to the enhancements to bus stops and fountains, cyclone fence maintenance in regards to the existing, those types of fences, that would be the existing property owner would be responsible for that maintenance, and also any ongoing maintenance in the future in regards to any more further site improvements. I haven't, I can't speak to the gravel on one side of the fence versus the other, because I haven't seen any of that, and that would be a question, obviously, in maintenance, and we'll get into that with them. Same thing with lighting and landscaping, we'll make sure that, I think we've, Donovan has, particularly with this volume of document that we had this time, what we did was we, I think we can do it and maybe post it on our website in regards to each individual item, and then provide a link to that, so you're not getting the full document, so it could be clearer. And I'm sure we're going to get a much more complete package, knowing the fact of our working with them, and working with your architect, working with the fire department, I'm sure we're going to be receiving quite a bit more documentation and more complete drawings to really illustrate what they plan on doing. In regards to, gosh, I think that's about it. I think I answered everything.
Okay.
I hate to, I hate to, you know, kick this down the road, but this is kind of what this is.
The times that it would be open?
Oh, times it would be open?
Oh, hours of operation, that's what it was, yeah, actually, yes. I'm not too sure.
Okay, good question. We touched on this last Thursday, but right now, our intent is it to be 24-hour access.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Northcross, do you have any comments or questions?
Just the, the building has not been used for a while. The proposed use has a lot of potential, but as the old saying is, sometimes the devil is in the details. Right now, I'm not hearing anything in terms of the details that are intractable and can't be overcome, but at the same time, if they're not overcome, then that would really, in my mind, take away from the project. In terms of what we have in front of us, a recommendation about rezoning from C31 Local Business and P1 Parking to C3 Commercial, to Corridor Commercial, I would think, you know, I would have no problems going ahead with that. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mayor Waterman?
So it's good that we had so many people interested in coming to hear about this, even though it's just a rezoning, it helps us to envision what this might become in the proposed use. One of the things about a city like Pontiac is that the commercial districts are often very much mixed with residential. So we have to look at the benefit of the residents and the neighborhood that this butts against. So, you know, I, I know this is just a rezoning right now, but having had this conversation, it's going to perk our ears up as we come back and listen to the things that, in the site plan, that very much the residents think are amenable, or not amenable to their being able to maintain their tranquility of their property. So with that, that's my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Parlov?
I have questions that will be directed probably to next meeting, but I'm going to throw them out there now, just for people to kind of anticipate answers, because I would like them as well. For the type of storage that's going to be on that property, is this the franchised brand, or is this going to be something that's a one-off? It sounds like your uncle is out at a, at a convention for this type of business, but is this something that you're, you have a portfolio of these businesses, or is this going to be your first one? The financing, is that in place for this already? And then the condition of, condition of the bank building is pretty terrible, just to be honest about it. I drove past it today to come here, and I think there's a hole in the roof, you can see from the ground up, that the ceiling's falling in on the fifth floor, and it's a really sad state that it's in right now, and hooray if you're willing to take that project on, but I'm curious to know what the scope of that project will entail in order to bring it to the level that it needs to be. So those are my thoughts for now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Payne?
Good evening again, and I just have a comment in regards to, thank you for taking our advice at talking with the residents, because that really is a driving force of businesses, because everyone have to really kind of get along with each other. So I'm hoping that in the future, between now and October, that there would be some kind of consensus with the residents, and maybe having another meeting to kind of iron out some of the things that was brought out today, and then at that time in October, those things will already be resolved. So those are my comments, and thank you.
I don't have any comments or questions, we went over this a lot at the last meeting last month, so I pretty much feel like a lot of questions have been answered for me.
May I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Per the rezoning criteria found in, here we go again, S E C 6.804 of the zoning ordinance, planning division's technical review and public hearing, I make a motion to recommend approval of ZMA 21-07. The recommendation would be presented to city council for approval that the request of the applicant Baldonio Di Bartimolo to rezone parcel number 641430384016 from C1 Local Business and P1 Parking to C3 Corridor Commercial Zoning District.
Support?
Roll call?
Yeah, roll call, please. Sorry.
Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Mayor Waterman?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve.
Vice Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any old business on the agenda, and then for new business, the next item is 7.1 SPR 21-19, which is site plan review for the address 821 Golf Drive.
Donovan will provide an overview of that project, and the applicant is here to answer any questions he may have in regards to that development. You probably met the applicant before at other projects, for the pace Phase 1 development, which has been successively completed. Now it is on a relatively smaller portion of the site that he owns to develop a multifamily development. Yeah? So, with that?
Yes.
Go ahead. Please, Donovan, thank you.
Thank you. So, your honorable body, before we get started, we're looking at site plan review 21-19 for the property address 181 Golf Drive. The applicant is proposing a multifamily development located in the R3 Multiple Family Dwelling District. So just a brief summary, the proposed multifamily development will include 48 apartment units located across two three-story standalone buildings. The apartments would, or the site would also maintain adequate parking, and then the facade of those structures will be The applicant is proposing a multifamily development located in the R3 Multiple Family Dwelling District. So just a brief summary, the proposed multifamily development will include 48 apartment units located across two three-story standalone buildings. The apartments would, or the site would also maintain adequate parking. And then the facade of those structures will be vinyl siding. They would include exterior balconies for some of those units, and then the unit mix would detail one and two-bedroom units. Just to get you an idea of where the site is, it is on the south side of Golf Drive, towards the southern end of the city, north of the Bloomfield Park development. Or if you're familiar with the City of Pontiac, Pontiac Youth and Recreation Center, it is just north of that, and you can see that area by this parcel outlined in red there. And on the zoning, in June of 2019, the parcel as a whole was rezoned to support future developments, multifamily developments. So currently, the parcel is on R3 Multiple Family Dwelling. And then you can see here with this red rectangle, a rough idea of where this development will be in context to the site as a whole. The applicant has provided a preliminary site plan, so you can see kind of towards the bottom of the screen, let's try to get a pointer. Sorry, I thought I had a pointer. But towards the bottom of the screen, you can see the 821 and the 827, the footprints of those buildings. The applicant is proposing retention in the front of the parcel towards Golf Drive, and in between the retention and your proposed buildings is where they're going to locate a decent chunk of their parking. Again, the same site plan review, just a different view. You can see again the two buildings to the bottom of the screen, the retention to the left, to fronting along Golf Drive, and then the parking in the middle. The applicant has also provided landscaping details where they are proposing to meet the landscaping requirements along the internal drive, but also along Golf Drive. Elevations are included in your packets, and on the screen you can see the three-story building, the proposed vinyl siding, and the balconies on the exterior, on the rear elevation, and the front elevation. You can see those. Again, just another view of the front elevation, where you can see the balconies and the units. So in review, our staff findings, we've identified that monument signage would be required along Golf Drive to indicate the properties located once you go down that private road there. The addresses were assigned to the property, or the proposed building A is 821, and sub-address B is assigned 827 Golf. All ground and building signs would require signed permits prior installation. And seeing as this request is for a preliminary site plan review, in our findings, the applicant would have to submit a final site plan review, which would be pending wayfinding and addressing approved by the Waterford Fire Department, Planning and Building Departments, Waterford Fire Department Plan Review, Engineering and Public Works Plan Review, and final Department and Building and Safety Plan Review. And that concludes my presentation for SPR 21-19 821 Golf Drive.
Thank you. Good evening. Do you have anything to add?
I do. Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Mayor, Mr. Gubson and Mr. Smith. My name is Bill Chalmers. I'm at 145 South Libranoy, number 145, pardon me, number 310 Rochester Hills, Michigan, 48309. I am the property owner of the lot that you just saw, and with me is my son Billy Chalmers, who's not only my son, he works with me, and he has headed up all of our apartment leasing. That's part of the reason why we're here, because in the midst of this housing crisis, and building on the momentum of the apartment building that we own just across the access drive, just to the top of the page, he leased that up in nine months. Twenty-six units were leased up in nine months. We now have an opportunity to develop 48 more units on land, which is right across the street, or right across the access drive that's already owned. And we're, because we already own the land, we're able to do it at market rate, rental rates, with no government subsidies required or needed. The mayor spoke about strata, different housing stock throughout the city. We understand that there is a lot of low-income housing that's being proposed and developed, that has been developed. We also see at projects like the 24 at Bloomfield, where a two-bedroom apartment rents for $1,600 a month. So our plan, we believe that there's a tremendous niche that needs to be filled with workforce housing. The apartment dwellers that we have are contractors. We have three students. We have a teacher. We have counselors at local hospitals. Those are the folks who are in the midst of this housing crisis that need places to live. We are able to, we will be able, with your approval, we're able to deliver 48 units for a two-bedroom apartment that will rent for $1,000 a month in the city of Pontiac. We understand this will be the first new housing stock at moderate prices in decades. All brand-new construction, and certainly all the infrastructure brought up to code. In addition to the leasing success of the adaptive reuse of that former dormitory across the access road, for those of you who don't know, that was the former dormitory for the Midwestern Baptist College. Thank you. And we converted that from a dormitory with individual rooms, a common cafeteria, a common restroom, a common showers, to 24 two-bedroom apartments and two one-bedroom apartments. And Billy was instrumental in that. In addition to that success, without even having a leasing sign-up on the property, we've received over 100 calls for folks looking for apartments in the city of Pontiac. We don't even have a phone number on that site. Also, just last week, one of our, one of our students moved out, completed her term, her four-year term at Oakland University, and unfortunately moved away to do her master's program in Georgia. However, the reason I'm telling you the story is when folks, nearby employees who work in the area saw a U-Haul truck in front of the eight, nine, the apartments across the way that we call the 819, they started calling Billy, asking if, if that meant that now there's an opening at the 819. Well, we have a waitlist, so it goes to the next qualified prospect. Also, very fittingly and comforting to know, the mayor has a relative who is also interested in perhaps leasing from us. So all of this told us that we have, there's a tremendous amount of demand for apartments in Pontiac. And we're wondering where they, where they could go. To the 24 at Bloomfield, where a two-bedroom apartment is $1,600, as I mentioned, or across Golf Drive to Crystal Lake, where those two-bedroom apartments are $1,100 a month, and there's a, last we checked, there's a 15-person waitlist. Or, shudder the thought, do we just, do we lose them altogether? At the same time, we have the national and regional housing crisis, we're also getting more employers into the city of Pontiac, folks like Amazon, folks like United Wholesale Mortgage, this development we just heard about tonight on Perry Street. So it would be a darn shame if we lost these folks to different towns, because we weren't able to supply moderately priced apartments, when we can do it right here, right now. We would certainly increase the city's tax base, we'd give them a place to live, we would have even more residents than we've already delivered to the city of Pontiac, that we've already enticed to come to the city of Pontiac, and then, of course, providing the jobs that go along with this type of construction. The features of this site, as Donovan had mentioned, are numerous. We have, in working with Donovan and Vern, we have clustered these buildings, and I want to note that to the left is the pond, the next kind of weird-looking triangle, that's actually a parking island, so that's even more green space. The reason it looks like that is because of the power lines that are above it. The ITC lines have a no-build zone underneath it, so we've stayed away from that. We've put our parking around it, and then we've clustered our buildings to go across the street from the existing apartment. That allows us to have two-thirds of the site to be open space in a pond. We've got plenty of parking, this will be brand-new construction, and of course, we're adjacent to a golf course. Each individual unit will, of course, be brand-new, with walk-in closets, a washer and dryer in each unit, and there will either be a balcony or a patio, depending upon what side, what, what floor you're on. These two-bedroom units have two bathrooms. Lots of two-bedroom apartments only have one bathroom. So we have a primary bedroom, and then we also have a secondary bedroom, both of which have their own bathrooms. We have safe, secure building with cameras. And per code, we would only need one ADA unit for 48 units. We actually have two. We'll have one in each building, so that we can make sure that anybody who has a wheelchair or other needs can certainly have a place to live as well. So I ask you, will you please support this new development for the city of Pontiac that will do all this and bring jobs with no government subsidies? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Northcross, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I see what looks to be little air conditioning units right under the window.
Yes, sir.
Are you controlling the air conditioning, those units you're going to install?
We, we will install them. Those are on the electric, so that would be the resident's choice.
Okay, okay. So, so, but you're not asking the residents to buy their own air conditioners, anything like that?
Absolutely not. Those come with the units. They'll be brand-new units. We've used them in the existing building. We absolutely love them. I personally have it in my office, and I, I love them, just that they're not, they're low-maintenance, very quiet, and what works is if you have a two-bedroom apartment, different people can keep the temperatures however, which they want. There's one for living and one for each bedroom.
I think I saw a chart of the sizes of the apartments.
Yes, sir.
I was leafing through this tonight, I don't see it. What, what are the sizes of the apartments?
A one-bedroom is 660 square feet, and a two-bedroom is 960 square feet.
Okay. Okay. Takes care of my, my questions? And I, I do like what happened with the dormitory.
Thank you.
For Midwest Baptist. I know there were some earlier proposals that kind of had me scratching my head, but I think you came up with a good solution. It appears that a good solution was arrived at for that dormitory, and hopefully it carries over to the units that you're proposing, and it appears that it has, just looking at your plans.
Thank you.
Mayor Waterman?
Hello? It's Mr. Chalmers. I have a question. There's a third building on that site, the, what is it, the senior daycare, is that going to stay under present configurations as far as you know?
Absolutely. Pace will not be touched in any way, shape, or form. They signed a 15-year lease, and we fully anticipate and expect them and, and want them to stay there for at least 15 years. The employees I spoke about, we're Pace employees. So we're looking forward to hopefully supplying their housing as well. Walkability from job to, to home is fantastic.
So you use my name very liberally, as you went through your expose about affordable housing and all those things. So I do have some specific questions, though. So as you bring in these new units, that's going to add a lot of density to that particular 13-acre parcel, I think it's 13 acres, right, or 12.6, something along those lines?
The parcel in, the only parcel that we're developing, that's three acres.
Three acres?
Yes, ma'am.
So how many units will you have on that, on that parcel that has both the apartment comp, the dormitory that's converted, as well as this new units that you're putting on there?
Well, on the parcel in question, it's the 48 units.
Forty-eight plus, and then how many in the, in the dormitory?
Four dormitory, it's 26 units.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to get a feel for, you know, the density that was going to be on that lot. You know, we have had experience before in terms of your development of that, the part of the, oh, the 819 Golf Drive. And one of our experience was that, as part of that agreement for that shared space, because that was owned by one owner at one time, you had agreed through development agreement to repurpose or to reconstitute the baseball field and the basketball court that was there. And it never really got done.
May I respond?
And what's there now? Let me just, I want, I do want you to speak to that, because it, that is something that is, you know, may not be related to this, but it is to me, because I've had, for, that experience. What you have under duress, as we've reminded you that that was what you agreed to do, have put up there that something is not at all what that agreement that we signed long ago, that could have been used by the children who were at that established center right next door to you. So, yeah, I do want to hear what you said, because right now, what I see that you have put up there, I don't see a basketball court that has been reestablished. What I see is two nets put across a gravel space. And I'm just, I want to hear what you have to say, because right now, I don't think that was what we had agreed to have happen, that the kids could have benefited from.
Well, when we went for site plan approval and rezoning a couple of years ago, we suggested that we would construct and improve those, because they had been not cared for in so long.
Yes.
And, yeah, we completed those improvements last week. And we paid for new nets to be brought in and brand-new poles, and resurfaced the lot, and put in bases and the ball diamond, and I'm, I'm, I feel badly that we did all that.
So I'm just, I'm just going to be forthright with you. What I see there, in my day, when we were raising kids, they had a baseball diamond, and baseball diamond had four diamonds in the space, and the kids ran the bases and that thing. I don't see that there.
Well, it was there when we installed it. I mean, unless somebody has stolen them since then, there are four bases and a home plate.
Okay.
Along with.
All right.
Base running, and, and the court has been resurfaced. We paid thousands of dollars for new nets, and, and we kept the backstops up to keep the ball from flying away.
Yeah. It did have, the, the basketball court was fenced in, the one, not that it has to have a fence, a basketball court. But what I see there is now two movable nets with, as I said, uneven gravel. I don't know what to call that, that black gravel stuff that you have between those two nets.
Ma'am, with all due respect, it's been sealed. It is asphalt that has been sealed.
Yeah. Well, you know, we've had a number of facilities for children ever since I was raising children in the city of Pontiac. And what you have put there is, I just have to say, I'm very, very, very disappointed. So I will say that, that may be, but I just had to get that off my heart, because, you know, one of the things I'd like to see is, as we do facilities for our children, we invest in things that are, that they can be proud of and play with. At the very end, as we're moving from this facility, they could have used it the two years that they were there, when you had signed that agreement, and I must say, I just have to get that off my heart to tell you that what I see there is not what I thought you had talked about in the quality of. And I know, because that's not the quality that I see that you've expended in the rest of your development, which will be profitable for you, but I do, that is my comment for tonight, and I just want to let you know that.
Thank you for letting me know.
Okay.
Mr. Parlov?
I have first a question for either Vern or Donovan. On our, in our packet, under review category, there's one item that is checked as does not comply. Size and dimensions of proposed buildings, gross and usable square feet, number of stories, overall height, and number of units. Can you explain why that's marked in our packet that way?
I believe that was, in our initial review, I think that that was a little bit of an oversight, and I thought that was corrected, but that, all that information is there on the plans.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Just double-checking.
That is correct.
For confirming, because it sounded like we were good to go. All right.
Apologize for the oversight.
Thank you. See, it shows you I read your material.
Thank you.
It was a trick.
It was. Okay, you passed.
Okay, so Bill, I have a couple of questions, looking at the, and thank you for coming back. How many times have we, this property in front of us, as these commissioners meet again tonight, so hopefully we can wrap it up. The... The floor plan, I don't have a problem with what you're proposing for the tenants. It's great that if it's a two-bedroom, they each have their own bath. It's really important, I know. Square footage, I don't even have a problem with that, but what I do have a problem with is the rendering. I see, for lack of a better word, plastic all over this building. There's no hard surface on anything. Is there any potential that you could please give us some stone or some brick, or is there anything that can be done on these exteriors that's not vinyl?
At these price points, it's tough, especially with the way construction costs are. We are looking at hardy board. So that would be the type of, of horizontal boards that we would be looking at.
Okay. When will you know?
Well, I mean, without site plan approval, it's kind of tough to move forward on bidding and construction costs, so.
And I know everything's bouncing all over right now, so I understand that.
It's absolutely, it's incredible that we're able to even come close to doing something like this, so I'm not quite sure that adding construction costs, it's.
Well, I know it's a tough time to build anything, to try and find anyone to do work. I'm sensitive to all that. However, as we either say yes or no, or whatever we say, and then you go about your day, and then you finish building these, and we drive by these. This is what we get to enjoy, hopefully more so than at another level, if it's not at a level that it would be in another community, if you were sitting in front of them and asking for their approval for your site plan. The other thing that, and I appreciate Chris bringing this up, the air conditioning units sticking out of the wall? Can you do mini splits in these units?
It's essentially a mini split. They're not, they're not air conditioning units that are sticking out like you see in a window. These are, they're called PTAC units, packaged thermal air conditioning units.
Okay.
They stick out four inches maybe from the wall.
But they're not the traditional one that hangs off?
Absolutely not. We would not build anything like that.
Okay. Okay. Then my one request is that there's something other than vinyl on these buildings, and preferably, I'd say at least 20%, 25%? And that's pretty minimal, because there's a lot of solid surface on these.
I certainly hear what you're saying. We tried to do a few other things to, to handle the architectural feel for this, and with the different reveals. So we have some bump outs, we have some reveals. Also, I can tell you that they having the balconies was a big discussion amongst our development team.
And I appreciate that those are there, too. I think that's important.
I won that one.
Good. Thank you for pushing for it.
And the patios. And that's tricky, when you get into constructibility, and also what happens on the ground floor, when you've got balconies above you, and you've got parking lot, parking spaces.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, we have the different bump outs, that we use different colors on, thank you about Commissioner Fegley, of course. So, yes, we will certainly look at 20%.
25, please. You said, you've got people waiting to rent.
Well, right at this price point is the thing.
I think you charged another $50, you still have the tenant that would want to be there.
Are we, so if this is approval, then we're negotiating the 20% to 25%?
That's my request, so it'll be amongst all of us to make the determination, but.
I know a lot of the ranch-style units that you did, there was a brick veneer base at the bottom that was, I don't know, maybe two, three feet, just at the bottom of the building. Maybe if you could do something like that, just to break up the elevation a little bit and.
If we will, if 25% is the number, then we can get to that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and so do the residents. Thank you. I'm done.
All right. Mr. Payne?
Well, good evening. Thank you again for your interest, and it's good to see you back again. First of all, I wanted to commend you on the student property there. I was really shocked at how that came out, because I really didn't expect for it to come out the way that it did, and so I am so pleased with that. One of the other questions that I have is that I did not go on the property itself, but I was wondering if there were any outdoor activities for these units, be it tennis courses or?
Well, we have the ball field and the basketball court that can be used. There's also, there's also a playground to the south that was refurbished by 50 volunteers from the city of Pontiac, and our residents at the existing apartments have been using all three.
Okay. And it's a baseball field and a basketball.
And a playground that's behind the school.
And a playground.
Correct. We don't, technically, the playground is not on my property, but we have a wonderful relationship with our neighbor who says it's okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Good evening. Okay, so these stairs are exterior stairs, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not a big fan of the through-the-wall system either. I saw those, and I was a little kind of taken back. Those I see more in hotels and retrofits, like you did for the dormitory. And I do agree with Mona, just adding a little brick to these buildings, the overall look of them's not that, I mean, I actually prefer them over the ranch styles that we saw earlier.
And if I, if I may, those were actually assisted living facilities.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's why they're ranch style.
Totally different type of user.
Yeah. I guess, I don't have any other comments besides, I'm not a real big fan of those through-the-wall systems. But I would like to see an increase in some type of hard surface, whether it be brick or something, just to break it up. But that's all I have. Does anyone else want to make any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Of our planner?
Sure.
Why in this case do we have a preliminary site plan? Can we, given the comments, should we just wait for a final site plan? Is there any reason why we need to do a preliminary?
Well, it was based upon our review that the applicant did do a very good job of providing us with all of the details according to our checklist. So from that standpoint, I know that we're talking about brick and other types of materials, but I think we've answered everything else. So based upon that, that's why we recommend that, we're suggesting at least giving a final, final preliminary site plan approval. And if you look at the recommendations that are here, you can approve the preliminary site plan and grant the planning division authorization to grant that final site plan approval, or you make a motion to deny the preliminary site plan and ask them to come back to the planning commission. That would be the two alternatives.
Or we can approve the final preliminary site plan, and as we've done in other cases, require that the final site plan come back to this planning commission.
Just for presentation, to making sure that all the items have been addressed?
Yeah, it seems like you've had a checklist, but my fellow commissioners have added us something else to the checklist, so we would like to probably see that back. So I will move that. Okay? I'm going to move that, if that is permissible. Okay?
Okay. So you're moving that to what?
I make a motion to approve the preliminary site plan SPR 21-19 from 819 Golf LLC, 821 Golf Drive, PIN 64-19-05-102-015, and require the planning manager to return the final site plan to the planning commission for consideration.
Support?
Roll call?
Mayor Waterman?
Yes, I approve that.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes.
Commissioner Parlov?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fegley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
So you'll issue me the conditions, or, I mean, we add 25% hard surface, and then it's approved? And we're still trying to build this construction season, so that's where now we're in a quandary.
I think the next planning commission meeting is only, what, two, three weeks away?
October, the first Wednesday in October.
Yeah, so it's only three weeks away. Is that going to offset you?
Yeah, and I'm not sure what we're submitting. I mean, if the only condition is 25%, then I'm happy to take a final and make that condition. I don't know why we.
I don't think the air conditioning units are going to change, correct? That's not even on the table.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, we conceal, we conceal the look as much, is that rendering in there?
We have just a black and white elevation.
Yeah, we did 3D renderings. We did aerial renderings, and they're hardly noticeable at all. That's all I can say. And from a functionality standpoint for apartment dwellers, they're absolutely fantastic. Nobody fights over the thermostat.
If the only item is the brick, is there any way that we can have that updated and distributed among us to look at and get approval from that prior to waiting three weeks for the next meeting?
Well, we would have to do it in a public, we would have to do it in a public meeting. We can't disseminate in giving approvals, you know, from that standpoint, from an entire commission. So we would have to make, or that, or schedule a special meeting as relates to this item.
So question, in a special meeting, then would the notice have to go out again?
We just have, to schedule a special meeting, we just need 48 hours.
Can we do that over Zoom?
We could publish it that way in our website, yes.
Would you be amenable to that, doing a special meeting over Zoom when you have the updates?
If it's adding the 25%, then, yeah, I'd be.
Maybe we could set something up for that next week?
Quick question. Can we have meetings over Zoom? I thought with the end of the mandate, the state mandate, we now have to meet, hold our public meetings in public.
That is correct.
We're no longer under a state of emergency. That ended in July 1st, so. But are we saying that, I heard some of the commissioners ask, could it be considered and what to do with the air conditioners, and what was the other? So are we just assuming that he can't look at that, or are we, I thought that's?
No, I think there is a question regards to what type of units there would be, and then Mr. Chalmers reiterated regards of what that unit would be, would only be protruding roughly about four inches outside, which is not what you're thinking of as a window unit. You just pop in with a pole holding it up.
Because the overall site plan does meet all the requirements. I think the only holdup is really the brick. Is there any way we could revote to make it internal?
I'll take it one step further. We'll do 30% hard surface, and please make a conditional, because that'll allow me to have these men work this fall, and women.
I think that's fair enough.
In order to change the motion, the commissioner that proposed the initial motion would have to rescind it.
Rescind it.
I believe you would have to have a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Which would require two-thirds vote, I believe.
So I make a motion to reconsider the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to reconsider.
Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to reconsider.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to reconsider.
Mayor Waterman?
No.
Vice Chair Fegley?
Yes, to reconsider.
Four yeses, one no.
Okay.
Okay, two-thirds.
Now you have to vote.
Right.
Another motion. Okay.
For a new motion.
So the motion would be is similar to what was on the recommended motion, with the added that 30% of.
Hard surface.
The surface of the buildings.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the preliminary site plan SPR 21-19 from 819 Golf LLC, 821 Golf Drive, parcel identification number 641905102015, and allow the planning manager authorization to grant final site plan approval, subject to final site plans, including 30% hard surfaces added to them on the exterior.
30% on the total?
Of all the buildings.
Okay. On each facade?
Each, yes.
On each elevation, on each side, 30%?
Yes.
Well, 30% over the overall building. If they want to put more on, more like golf, like facing Golf Drive or whatever.
Okay, but 30% total?
30% total.
30% total.
Discussion? Do we have a support for that, or do you need a support?
I need support.
I will vote support and discussion. I think that is a good recommendation from my fellow commissioners in terms of establishing quality and appearance for that particular site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to approve with a 30% hard surface.
Mayor Waterman?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Vice Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, next on the agenda is 7.2 SPR 21-21 site plan review for 25 South Sanford.
All right, thank you. All right, so our next case is SPR 21-21 site plan review for the subject parcel 25 South Sanford. This is the same parcel from our first rezoning hearing. It is a proposed site plan review for a multifamily development that, since our first hearing, is pending a rezoning from R1 to R3. So just some brief background. The applicant is seeking site plan approval to improve the former 5.6-acre Purdue Academy site. The site is bounded by Pike Street to the north, Chandler Street to the south, Francis to the east, and Sanford Street to the west. The property is located in an R1 district, and the applicant is proposing to rezone it to R3. It is bordered by other R1-zone properties to the east, west, and south. The north, you have some R1, you have some R1 and C1 local business properties. The project does include seven new construction two-story mixed-unit buildings, residential buildings totaling 76 units, and the building has a total footprint of roughly 45,000 square feet. The development would also include, and I'm going to go back, the development would also include a 4,000-foot, square-foot community building, and other improvements such as parking, drive areas, pedestrian access facilities, landscaping, screening, and other site improvements. So just one more time on the screen, the site is currently zoned R1, and you can kind of see the makeup of the zoning around it. They are proposing R3 multifamily dwelling districts. In the site plan, you can see facing the exterior or toward those interior streets, you can see the units, the 76 units, and towards the center, you can see the proposed community building and the playground area in the center of the screen there. Again, the applicant has provided more detailed drawings, so you can see the proposed landscaping around the exterior of the proposed development, and you can see the inclusion of parking located on the inside of the development. And then I do want to bring note to the two primary entrances and exits on the north along Pike Street, and the south, it looks like there's one along Chandler. The applicant has also provided some elevations. Again, we see some vinyl siding balcony, and then we have some, some kind of alternative materials. Again, we see some vinyl siding balcony, and then we have some, some kind of alternative materials to break up that elevation. Again, more elevations. And they've also provided the elevation of the proposed community center, which again has some vinyl, it has some stoned veneer along the bottom. And it will be the kind of one-story ranch-style community building. So a part of our staff findings, the applicant is requesting a preliminary site plan approval. They intend to submit for MISHDA funding here in the near future, and the preliminary site plan approval is necessary to increase their odds of getting that funding. There are 200 parking spaces required. The preliminary site plan does detail 165, so that would be addressed towards the final site plan review. And pending the final site plan review, the applicant will be required to submit a landscaping and screening plan that would be approved in addition to the other final site plan review requirements outlined in the technical review. And then lastly, final site plan review is pending an approved wayfinding and address plan approved by the Planning Division Building Department and the Waterford Fire Department. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here still? All right. Do you have any other further comments?
Um...
Top of what Donovan?
I think unless, this has brought up some questions. We gave a pretty good overview at the beginning. As you see, we do have some cultured stone in our elevations here. I know, Mona's very happy about that.
Yes.
And it's a look that we've done on a lot of our other multifamily developments. It's very attractive. We usually combine wood, vinyl, and the cultured stone, and it's a very attractive look.
I agree. All right, thank you. Commissioner Northcross, do you have any comments or questions?
What's the square footage? I think there was a chart in here, but I don't see it right now. Of the units, I think you have one, two, and three-bedroom units here.
Approximately 600 two on the ones, up to 1,200 on the threes.
Okay, so that would be 600 for the ones, and then the twos would be, would vary.
Brian, do you have a... This is our architect, Brian Boucher.
Good evening. Brian Boucher, I reside in Muskegon, Michigan. I've worked with CJ and Community Housing Development Network on past projects on East Point, which I'm very proud of. If you ever get down to take a look, it's a beautiful community they just created. But briefly, there are five building types, and the units vary to fit within those types. So we have to kind of give a range here for that question. The one-bedrooms are, you know, around 600 square feet. The twos are probably in, or in the sevens to the 850s, and the threes are in the elevens to 12, 1250-ish.
Okay, okay. Now, there's no air conditioning in these?
There is air conditioning.
There are air conditioning in all the units?
All the units will be air-conditioned, and we use a pad-mounted system that is properly screened.
I guess, well, knowing that there is that agreement about management performance and the city being able to have some input if that management of these units falls below what's expected, I think that's a real plus. We are putting, what, 76 units into about five acres of land, and that can get kind of tight, especially with some of these units being three-bedroom units. So management will be a key here on some of these units. But that's good that you've agreed to that, to that oversight, that additional item. Because there's going to be a lot of people going in and out, and management and maintenance will be very important to keep these units in a condition that they serve the city and allow maybe the entry for different families into the city to be able to grow and possibly move on to other areas in the city. So, good, good. Well, I'll stop there. I'll let my other fellow colleagues, I'm sure they have some other questions.
Thank you. Mayor Waterman?
The only comment I'd like to have CJ, because I'm used to the kinds of projects you've done elsewhere in the city, and I can speak to the quality of that. And not only the neighborhood, you're actually community builders. I love the fact that you have a, you created a community here in terms of what you're doing. That's important, because when we did our early economic recovery plan, we found out there were a number of vacant schools in the city that had been abandoned because of downsizing the school district. But we found that as we surveyed the neighbors, that school site was always the anchor of that particular community. So even though it won't be a school anymore, that still, that community has been built around and that anchors. So that's why it's important to have something that rekindles that for people. I love the fact that you haven't, you know, crowded in at such density, that you've taken 4,000 square feet to build a community center for that. That further establishes that as an anchor. So I love the fact that you are community builders, not just, you know, profit makers. So with that, as we, if the commissioner has approved this, I know you got to get to MISHDA, so you need to get very soon, like tomorrow, in touch with our economic development so we can work out the other parts of that, so you can make your deadline. Because we would have to take this to council if it's approved in order for you to make your deadline in, at least by the 21st.
Thank you. Commissioner Parlov, do you have any comments or questions?
I do have a couple of questions. I have questions again first for my beautiful support groups in the planning department. The chart we have, again, some questions where it says it doesn't have what we need. Construction types and use groups, is it still accurate?
Let me just see. Oh, he's not here. We did get that use group information in, so, yeah. Again, yes.
Provide details on person design and circulation, is that...
Sufficient for preliminary plan review, yes.
Great. The one thing that I saw today, makes me a little sad, is the placement of the dumpsters. Those, when we have hot summer days like we have, they're right outside where these people live. And I have a very, I'm a sensitivity to dumpsters, because where I live, I'm right off a telegraph, and I don't know who comes and dumps the garbage from the distance behind me. But it sounds like a gun goes off, or bomb goes off in the middle of the night. They bang these dumpsters outside my house, and it's not even in my backyard, it's like over the wall. And it's so loud. So I'm looking at where these are placed next to where these people are living, and it's just going to be, I know it won't be a desirable feature when they're living in that unit. Is there any way you can address that, do you think?
Can we take a look at that? Absolutely. I think what you, when you look at the site plan, one thing that stands out is there's a lot of surface. Kind of from a proportional, just from composition. And the city does have a pretty rigorous parking count per bedroom as opposed to unit, which drives that parking requirement up. And actually, we struggled to make that count just based on this initial submission. And we do need to reevaluate how we're going to accomplish that, but we do have a couple avenues that we think we can propose during final. But to your question, absolutely, we can take another look at the placement of those dumpsters. We're looking for every orthogonal space possible to park. And unfortunately, corners was an easy target for some of those dumpster locations, but certainly we can take another look at that. Because I appreciate and certainly understand that.
It's a real-life experience. No one should have to experience and endure, so thank you for your support.
Commissioner Payne?
Thank you again, and I'd just like to comment again on thanking you for including the residents in your decision-making. Makes it a happy place. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the review category, it says to our spaces required, 165 spaces provided. Do we have to do a reduction in parking spaces?
We have to, we don't know exactly. We will address it in regards to when we get into final site plan review. After they've been approved for, through MISHDA and all of that, that is when the final site plan will come into play. And we would understand that we'll have to take a look at those counts.
Okay.
Yeah. And also, I think that the commission has done this before. Like, remember the Woder Group in regards to Winston Commons, right around the corner from here?
Yeah.
Okay, Mechanic. We took a look at that, because in regards to what we did find was, you know, the type of bedrooms and so forth in regards to people with cars or just with one car, it just found we didn't really need to have the maximum parking as zoning requirements requires.
I'm always in favor of reducing parking if we don't need it.
Yeah, particularly in examining, also examining on-street parking. Usually, a lot of times, we work with the applicant in regards to saying, you know, plan for 20% to be on-street. You know, the rest of it will be reserved for the locals or in that neighborhood, so, yeah.
I appreciate the community building and the raised planter garden and the bike racks and a lot. I mean, you did fit a lot into this site plan, and I appreciate all the planning that went into it. I don't have any further comments or questions. May I have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary site plan SPR 21-21 from Community Housing Network, 25 South Sanford, parcel identification number 641428455001, and allow the planning manager authorization to grant final site plan approval upon receipt of zoning map amendment from City Council, R1 family dwelling to R3 multiple-family dwelling zoning district.
Support.
Roll call.
Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve.
Mayor Waterman?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
And Vice Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
5-0.
Congratuisees.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we have three special presentations, and then at the end of the special presentations, we usually do have a public comment, and then we adjourn. So if anyone would like to speak at the end of special presentations, feel free to stick around. Our first special presentation is for 640 West Huron, the Webster Community Center.
Look at this.
Thank you.
Wow.
Is there anyone from the Webster project that wants to do? All right, thank you.
My name's Coleman Yocum, 29 Waldo, one block from this building. I'm here representing the project, as is our architecture team. So our organization, Micah Six Community, came in possession of this building in 2016. We have, we are located in the neighborhood. Our home base is 32 Newberry, so we have the community gardens and everything back there. We purchased the building sort of with an eye to open a community center. We were aggressively paying off our land contract and then had the balance of that forgiven in 2018. And so we own it free and clear. And so then we started a pretty aggressive sort of information gathering campaign in our neighborhood. We handed out over 300 surveys to people, asking if we build a community center, what do you want to see in the community? And we got all sorts of answers, like, you know, from low-cost dog grooming to we want bird watching classes, to a number of other things. 74% of respondents said we want a place to play basketball in the winter. And so this building comes with a gym, and so that worked out really well. But we were able to distill down the things that people really wanted to see, made sure that what we were, the folks that we were talking to were representative of the neighborhood that we're located in. And with that, we really focused on four things: arts and culture, youth programs, entrepreneurship, and health and wellness. With the information in hand, we then went to organizations that are already in Pontiac or that are already doing great work, that we already partner with, and we said, we have a lot of data now that says that people want what you do in this community center. If we open it, do you want to, you know, once we renovate, do you want to move in and be a tenant? Today, we have 100% of our space committed with six organizations on a waiting list. Those tenants are listed in the booklet that you've been provided. I have additional copies for anybody else who wants to look at it. They include ULSA, they want to put six Head Start classrooms in that building. They also want to put a WIC office in that building. The Art Experience is moving in to take three classrooms to do art programming and art classes. Rochester University wants to put in a distance learning lab. So if you want to work on an associate's degree, but you can't get all the way over to Rochester, you can sit in a lab and do modules at your pace and on your time schedule, which is pretty cool. We're working with SMART to consolidate a couple of bus stops that are located right there on Huron in front of the building that are uncovered, muddy spots on the side of the road. Consolidate them, bring them inside. Part of the site plan you'll see is a loop where buses can pull up and drop folks off, so that people aren't waiting in the weather. They can sit inside in a place that's heated, that's cooled, with monitors, where they can see when their bus is going to arrive, that sort of thing. PALS looking at moving in to do basketball, volleyball, and martial arts. Kaleo Kids, the dance program that blends inner-city and suburban kids into a dance program together. Accent Pontiac has started doing a lot of music programming now in Pontiac Public Schools. You all know about Accent Pontiac. This will be their first in-town physical home. Really excited about. So these are great, great, great organizations that are looking to move in to do what they do and to do it there in the neighborhood. We're doing the best we can to make it as accessible as possible, working out really great arrangements with SMART and a number of our organizations, you know. What does a SMART connector look like that goes and picks kids up at Walt Whitman and brings them to the center in the afternoon to do music programming and things like that? What does evening programming look like? What does small business programming look like? We have an incubator kitchen that's going to be in this building that food entrepreneurs can rent by the hour for their small businesses. So this is the plan. We are moving forward with this project. It's going really well. It's getting a lot of excitement and a lot of support. Our neighbors are the people who are most excited about it, and that's how it should be. So I'm here for questions. Oh, and Honor Community Health, sorry, somebody from Honor here. Honor Community Health, moving, they're taking four classrooms to put in a walk-in clinic in this building as well. So some really great partners, Pontiac Community Foundation's taking two classrooms. They're the ones who are going to be running the small business incubator. So really, really great, established, community-driven partners that are all going to be part of this project with us.
Great. Yes, thank you. Would any of my fellow commissioners want to comment at all?
I'm going to go ahead and invite our architecture team up. I'm sure some of these questions might be a little out of my range and more for them, but this is Robert Clark from CBI Designs.
Well, this is more just a general comment. You know, Webster School, a number of years ago, when it was still part of the Pontiac School District and still operating as a school, became one of the first schools, became the first school in Pontiac, and I think one of the first schools in Michigan, to be certified as a walk-to, they won an award as a walk-to-school program. And it required the police, the fire, DPW, and other folks working throughout with the community to establish routes that young people could walk to and from school with different people in the neighborhood watching out for the young people as they go to and from school. And I think you have that opportunity here again. It sounds like you're probably already there. I know I have some friends who have children in the neighborhood, and they've spoken very highly of you and your programs and other things that are going on there. So this is, this is, this is good. This is a good reuse of that building, a historic building. Wonderful building. I don't know if you've found all the minutes to the PTA meetings that were under the stage in the gym, I think it was?
Have not found that.
And I think they date all the way back to like 1930 or something. I saw them years ago, but they may or may not be there. I mean, I'm talking 10 years ago or something. But excellent, great, great location, still a lot of density of people in that area. And it looks like it's an area that's becoming more and more diverse in a very positive way. That's good. So, yes. Excellent.
Yeah, ditto everything he said. Plus, I would just add that the same thing I just talked about where schools, even if they've been vacated, are the anchor. And not only that, but Huron is the main east-west corridor through the city, the heart of the city. And that's something that we're turning into as we do this new master plan, having a corridor improvement plan, because that is the major way that people see the city as they come through. So it's nice to know the property by property. So, it's nice to know the property by property that's being reinvigorated. So, I love the fact that it's a historic building. I've been driving past there for years and years, thinking, oh, maybe somebody could really do something to maintain the historic integrity of this, but yet, a very innovative idea and way to use it, so can't wait.
Want to talk about our historical application?
Okay.
I, I certainly can. The, the, we, we have contracted with a, an architectural firm that does primarily historic preservation work and historic nomination work. We just, within the last two days, received our first draft back from the State Historical Office with glowing reviews. We have, like any, any application of its nature, have a few little things to tweak here and there, but, but that is proceeding well. And we are anticipating that nomination to be in front of them at their next available hearing date, which is in January. That is kind of a key link to this whole project, because it becomes a part of the National Historic Trust.
Great. That brings together a lot of symbiotic things, you know, fresh food and health and culture and art and youth activity just checks off a lot of boxes, so, as I said, can't wait.
Yeah. If I, if I may also, I've had the privilege here to work with Mr. Yocum and also his development team in regards to working over through the logistics in regards of site plan, those type of questions. And we'll be moving forward, forward in regards to site plan issues and anything else that has to be done in regard, from a building standpoint. I would say that from a site planning, it's the building that's the gem, and that's what's going to be worked on the most. From a site plan perspective, obviously, a work on parking and circulation, you know, lighting, all of that. But the remaining areas in the, in the, on the north end of the site, you know, with the gardens and the ballfields will remain. So, from a site plan perspective, it's hard to say, more administrator-reviewed, but I think both myself and Donovan really believe that it was good timing for this project to be presented to the commission and, and just give them a light of regards. Obviously, we have this tremendous support here in this community and also with Coleman Yocum and his team. And it's been, it's been a great experience of working with them, and so I look forward to continuing that and bringing back more information to the commission to get insight in regards of what's going on.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, this picture almost looks like one of the pictures I have on my little yearbook from when I went to school there. I won't tell you what year, but it was a long time ago. And I have such good memories of this school. My room was twenty-one. I was down on this end. Mrs. Stoltenberg was my teacher, and she would teach us square dancing. And I had to dance with Mrs. Stoltenberg in first grade because she was as tall as me in first grade. I had to match up with her height-wise. And then in this area where the parking is, there used to be the fair that they would have, and they set up this, the cake lock. And the moms, typically, the moms would make homemade cakes for giving away. And they had a little galvanized, it was probably not that big, but it was big when you were a kid. It was a galvanized pan that probably animals ate out of like a feed trough. And they put water in it, and they had a little jet that would circle the water around, and they would put ducks in the, in this little galvanized pan. And you would have to pick up the duck, and there would be, it was like a rubber ducking. There'd be a number on the bottom of it. If you had the right number, then you won a prize. I mean, all these little things that are so important. And this, and this thing that you've done that has maintained a sense of community for the residents that when they drive by it, they look over and think, oh, I remember, but the building isn't open anymore. But now, it is open, and it's growing, and they, these things that you're doing are unbelievable. These are the things that you read about in, in the newspaper that they do out in Seattle or someplace else, but you're doing it here in our neighborhood, so thank you for all that you've done. I really appreciate it.
Good evening, and thank you for your interest in bringing the city of Pontiac back and alive again. So, I appreciate that. I agree with everything that everyone has said, but I wanted to add that this booklet is truly outstanding. You and your team have done a great job with the presentation and doing that. And I think this is saying the same thing. I'm just grateful for you bringing learning back into the building. And not only that, you're making it such a diverse community, you know, where it involves everyone, and, and it's just great. Also, I wanted to know one thing, though, in regards to whether there be any paid employees or hired employees, or is all of this going to be volunteer throughout the building?
No, so the six Head Start classrooms that are moving in represent an expansion of Head Start in the city. So, those are new jobs that are coming to the building. The WIC office is also an expansion. And then any, any of our tenants that are moving in, all of them are anticipating adding staff for this new space. And so, there will be a lot of new jobs that are generated by this building. I think our conservative estimate for our Oprah application was twenty-nine.
Okay. Great. And a target date of the expectation of having all of this together?
Sure. So, we are, we, we have a very narrow and tight timeline. And so, things are happening. The dominoes are falling the way that they should. We are anticipating groundbreaking first quarter of next year and finished first quarter of twenty-three.
Great.
That's that. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for your commitment to the city. You've always been a big, passionate person about coming to Pontiac and investing in Pontiac, and I appreciate it so much, especially with all of these school buildings sometimes being torn down. It's nice to see one actually renovated, and not only renovated, but renovated with historical accuracy. I mean, that's a huge commitment. That's a huge investment, and I really commend you for taking that path.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
We're having, I don't know, and I, I hope everybody gets this, we're having so much fun. I got Instagram pictures today, and she's like, have you seen the skylight that we just uncovered? And like this big beautiful skylight here, and all these really great elements that we also get really giddy about and get really excited about. So, we're, we're having a great time, having a lot of fun doing it.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Well, we can't say thank you enough. If you need anything from us?
He needs money. Let's just cut to the chase.
I, I have the joy of being the hype man for this project, but folks like Rob and our, our team are the ones who, you know, generate most of the requests and come to, come into contact with the things. But wanted to introduce them tonight and just, you know, put them in front of you and just talk about this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks to your team.
Yes, thank you. All right. Our next presentation is for medical marijuana. Yeah, we're going to do all the presentations, and then at the end, if anyone would like to speak or do public comments, we open, open the plan and commission to the public. And then our other item after the medical marijuana is the two thousand and twelve City of Pontiac Master Plan that we're going to just briefly discuss.
So, is there anybody to talk about the medical marijuana?
I don't know. Who's on that, who's, is that Donovan, or is that you, Vern, or is that?
Actually, it's.
It's not me.
No. You're.
I'm not presenting that. You are. It's just an update. I know many of those things have come through council, through the planning commission, so I just asked.
Right.
Vern, there's been some developments, and people have been waiting to hear, so I just thought he could give you a capsule summary of where we are.
Okay, and I can just speak in regards to where, where I have been in regards to the review of applications. I'm, I'm one of many that in planning is reviewing and scoring the various medical marijuana applications. We, I have completed, and as you know, the clerk has ranked and provided that announcement for Caesar Chavez, the downtown, and also what I call the non-overlay districts, and gave that ranking for all of those. I just received for me to review planning, the Walton Boulevard overlay district, which has fifteen. So, I'm quite excited to get the last fifteen. I have a hundred and three applications off my plate.
Oh, my gosh. Good for you.
With that being said, I know that I can't speak in regards to, I don't know where we are in regards to appeals as relates to those applications within those various districts. So, that is an aspect that I can't really address at this time. That is something that, but things are moving forward, I believe. I know that there's been some back and forth between interim city clerk and also our legal team that has been working very closely with that project to ensure the integrity of that review is, is being completed and moving forward.
Great job.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Vern, yeah, thank you. Did a great job. I didn't want to have to do that. I'll just say that. This process has taken such a long time, and I just thought, people ask me, and I say, well, we'll can update you because a lot came before this council. We look upon that, when it came to the city, by a vote of the people, to bring it as a form of economic development, because every, all the applications require to have some kind of community benefit. And what community wouldn't welcome? Economic development. But it's been a longer process than we thought, so we just thought we'd give you an update periodically to let you know where we are and the process. Okay? Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. All right, the two thousand and twelve City of Pontiac Master Plan. Vern, are you?
Yeah, I'll start off. It's kind of interesting, two thousand and twelve.
Twenty-fourteen.
It's twenty-fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just.
No, no, it was written as two thousand and twelve. I was envisioning, I thought it said two thousand and twenty-one regarding where we are today. What I would like to talk about, and I know that we've been talking about briefly at various meetings and talk about the need. I, I know that I came on board in two thousand and eighteen, and in two thousand and nineteen, we got hit with a number of items that came much more of priority. And it was a, a little bit of a learning curve for me to make, figure out kind of the do's and don'ts of the City of Pontiac and working with my boards and commissions, which I love you dearly. And I, I think now it's an opportunity.
You love us the most. You love us the most.
I, I do. Well, yes, I do.
Don't let the DBA know that.
And let me just say that we've been scoping it out. We've been talking with Michigan EDC as regards to redevelopment-ready community. They have streamlined a little bit of the process, so it's a little bit more easier to obtain. So, obviously, Donovan's championing that. And with that being said, so we're looking at two options in regards, and just want to get your insight in regards to how you would like to proceed with recent census information that has been released and looking at the plan in two thousand and fourteen. It talked about the new economy, and I, and the terminology to me is, is, is well-used. And that new economy started in two thousand and eight, and now we're in two thousand and twenty-one. I don't know if it's a new economy anymore. I think things have changed, and obviously, our plan needs to reflect those changes. It would reflect it, obviously, in regards to census information that's coming in. So, we'll have a better understanding in regards to that data point, in regards of where we're targeting progression, in regards to age of population, male and female, demographics, details of such, that really provides that analysis or that data in regards of where we should protect future land use. And I think that we understand also that with these new projects that are coming on board, we're talking about, obviously, an advancement in regards to what was occurring along South Boulevard and Center Point and what's occurring around M-one concourse in regards to a whole South Boulevard innovation district that could become and what that means, the conversion of the two-way conversion of Woodward Avenue and how it plays into downtown and do we, how do we look to integrate that new road network as part of that plan? Also, these cycle tracks that we talked about biking through downtown and biking along South Boulevard, interconnecting the Clinton River Trail. And so, the question really becomes is, we're taking, we're, we're considering maybe, maybe two approaches. One approach would be kind of do a kind of minor update that could be done relatively quickly. Or do we take it to an approach where, as kind of illustrated here, which is maybe a seven-to-nine length process with public engagement, with looking at the various chapters and going through them one by one with the commission in, in regards to others, to take a more, longer, comprehensive approach to planning for the future. And so, I'm looking for guidance from you as commissioners to kind of see what, what direction should we take? I don't need to have an answer tonight, but it's something that you want to ponder.
Can you remind me, when we updated this last time, was it a volunteer group of six or seven people that got together and did it? Or is this something, I forgot how, went around, did it?
I believe so. From, I wasn't here at the time, but I do remember seeing a picture in that front cover of that plan in two thousand and fourteen.
I can speak to that.
Yeah.
Because some of us were here when that happened.
Yeah.
When I came on board, remember, we had a planner and I'm still a, a city administrator who thought he was the emergency manager. And he wanted to update the master plan, which was way overdue, by sitting in a room and just dictating what that should be. And I said, no, this should be a process that we open up to the community. So, we had lots of stakeholders who came in, and then some of the people in the planning commission did this over a period of time. It took about six, seven months to do it. So, it was such a worthwhile, and we did a major overhaul that turned out to be a document that we have here that has stirred this test of time over time. The only thing that I regret, we got so busy, as our planners did, that they, and you chided us for this, we never finished doing the zoning or, 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 and this to match it. So, whatever process you choose, whether it's just a minor update, because we did such a major rewrite the last time, may not need that master rewrite this time, or to take that seven-to-nine process he's talking about. But, you know, the question with all the things that are going on, whether they really have time to do that. But whatever you decide, whatever we decide, just finish the project. Don't, don't leave it half-unfinished like we did by not doing the appropriate zoning changes.
Is this something that we have to vote on tonight, or is this something that we can think about?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I would like to throw something out as a suggestion for us, is for the planning and zoning to come together
and kind of look at all the hiccups that we've encountered during the time that we've been here. And then later on, make those things known to the residents and all, and then have a big open forum for our residents to come and put up their stickies of what they would like to see. And I think that will help to kind of, it, it forms like the same outline that we had, but what it does is it gives us a shorter time, you know, we don't have to have that real long time where we have to meet with all the districts. So, if we bring everyone together and announce that and make it really well-known where people can just rotate through and give us their ideas and their thoughts of what they would like to see.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that portion, that, that reviewing what we've done and how it works and trying to summarize that, I think that's really important for looking forward to the improvements that we want to make. I, this is an excellent suggestion. So, it's kind of like, you know, it's not either wait seven months and, and improve it, or do it right now and improve it. It's more of a, a series of things where we put that review process in and try and summarize what worked and what didn't work, what areas that we fell down on, what areas that we did, we exceeded our expectations on, and summarize that, and then go forward to the public, share that with the public to get their input, and then make those corrections.
And remember, a master plan is what you foresee you want to be in the future. So, it's planning for where you want to be in the next seven or ten years. And it might be good to go through and evaluate what, what benchmarks we did make from when we did do it seven or eight years ago.
Two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, what I'm kind of hearing is kind of like this, this hybrid type of approach, which I, I'm kind of, we can put pen to paper and kind of come up with a little more solid direction.
Yeah, maybe some volunteers, as you mentioned, from the commission and from the DBA, I guess, or from the zoning council. Putting that together along the expertise of. Putting that together along the expertise of staff.
Appeals involved by the HTC.
Yeah. Yeah, just all meeting.
And we had a lot of stakeholders from the community too, just were interested in their districts and their neighborhoods and came and participated, you know, for a number of workshops.
And we've, I mean, some of the technologies that are, that are on the horizon here, you know, maybe we won't have completely autonomous driving cars, but there may be some things that we want to do to facilitate these cars. And in doing so, that could revamp our whole look of roads, systems.
Our parking lots.
Parking lots, that sort of thing.
Parking lots anymore. You got these cars just kind of moving around. They'll drop you off, get your groceries, they'll come back for you when you want to come back.
Yeah, I already have a friend who's in Florida and he can call his car in the parking structure to come drive down to him and pick him up as he pays for the exit fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the things that's going on in the community right now that we have a chance to talk about is that we have American Rescue Black money. And no plan, and that's what we want to settle to do. We got thirty-seven point seven million dollars that we can use for some eligible uses, including such things as maybe putting in the infrastructure to be a smart city, you know, people thinking smart cities. So that's what needs to go into thinking as we do that future use, that master plan, amongst other things. So, you know, we are, we had our first one today by Zoom. I said, I want to make sure that we get out to all the community. We'll invite everybody to have them district by district. We talk about the uses of this money, not only what to use it for, because we'll have more ideas than what we possibly have money, but also ways to leverage that. Some people's communities are just spending it and it's gone. There's a way we can leverage it. The state has billion, two point one billion dollars that they're putting just in infrastructure. Like County has more. So we come up with a project that we can piggyback with what is a state or county initiative, then you can turn thirty point seven point seven into ten times that much by leveraging. And that's what we want to have community conversation about because this is the people's money, on how they spend it and how they want to prepare that. Not only for this year, for next year, but for generations. But things like we're doing the, finally going to do the Woodward Loop Reconversion. And as they're doing that, they've also decided to do also Huron. They're going to reconstruct Huron for us. And so as we hear these projects going on in Huron, this is all part of a master future vision that loops together here. So those are all things that we can consider. And this thirty-seven point seven million will come in handy. But we want to hear community input and maybe take it to council and have a retreat and use that money wisely.
May I ask one quick question before I forget? And it doesn't have to do with the master plan. But tell me about the project of the resigning of Orchard Lake with Voorhees and Johnson Street. Is that MDOT's project?
No.
Is that ours?
Orchard Lake is a city, city road. So right now what they're doing is they're re, they're upgrading the traffic signals along that way. So they've been working on that for a while.
But the signs are magnificent. Are they backlit, I'm assuming?
We'll see.
They seem like they would have light in them because they're thicker, but they're tremendous.
Well, every time they would do a major reconstruction on a major intersection, they do it. And what's on Martin Luther King is a sample of what that does. So that'll be continuous without the city as they do the major inroads one by one.
Okay, we'll keep it up. I love it.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Lucy.
And this does include the master plan. In regards to the residents and the group and the zoning and planning coming together, I think it's also important to kind of engage our applicants slash customers that have come through us and kind of get their ideas and thoughts of what, what hiccups that they had. And I think that we can kind of clear some of those things and help. You know, because you want to be helpful in whatever way you can in regards to making sure that their needs are met and we're doing a great job at it. Because that's like a really great invitation for them to come into the city.
Okay. We still have public comments for tonight. So are there any other discussions about the master plan? Or are we good to move on?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time.
No problem. All right, so let's open public comments for anyone who would like to make a comment.
Hello again. Angela Rarkowski, Oriole Pontiac. The mayor mentioned that there, you guys have a form of overseeing the management of some of these properties as far as the gentleman who's redeveloping the whole school.
The pilot, the pilot's name?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I know our city. We need housing for everybody. And I also think we need to increase our tax base and bring in some more money to help our city out. It seemed to me that the gentleman who's going to bring a lot of money to our city, you kind of gave a hard time to. Whereas this guy who's not bringing us so much, you guys really liked him. And when I see him in the statement you made about how you guys can step in and oversee the management of some of these, these housing units, I see North Hill Farm where my uncle lives. And I'm wondering what broke down in that chain where someplace like, we're in the process of getting him out. It's been almost a two-year process. But we're afraid to go in there. He's afraid to stay there. I see the broken doors. I see the abandoned cars. I see the garbage. I hear about the violence, obviously. The whole city knows about that. So knowing now that you have some oversight over that, I guess it, it makes me hard to trust that you're going to make sure that this gentleman's project doesn't turn into another one of those. And are you doing anything to, to get in there and fix that kind of thing up to assure that his project over on Sanford won't be the same as North Hill Farms in 10 years?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
Okay. So on number one, I know the problems with North Hill Farms, okay? But I wasn't here and I didn't do the development agreement for North Hill Farms. That predated me. But anything that's come through, since we've had these new policy, had a chance to be at the table and have the team, we've put that level of oversight, as you say. I knew this gentleman because I know what he's produced in the city already. So we had the experience and we had track record. And I spoke to that. So it wasn't I liked him or so, I just know.
Correct.
I've seen the track record.
Okay.
And somebody else brought up the fact that I just, the pilots that they've done over Unity Park, which is what their project is, that has transformed that whole area in the city, Unity Park. And it brought such pride, you see those homes over there? And people take such pride in their neighborhoods and they have the community center. But also after a certain number of years, according to the contracts, those people can purchase those homes. So as we talk, we want to increase homeownership. That's one of the projects which they've allowed people to actually, if they live there long enough, according to the rules set by HUD.
He did say in the beginning that there was no, no, nothing in the works right now for anyone to own any of those.
Yeah. Well, that may be that project, but I'm talking about Unity Park that I'm used to. So I just wanted to add that. But I didn't want to go, I just wanted to, I felt compelled to just let you know that that's, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Other projects that have not had the same kind of oversight from the city. But hopefully they do when they come around for their next go-around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. My name is Sharnell House and I live at 59 Monroe Street. So I live in a very ghetto community. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. But I just wanted to say that since I moved over there in 2018, Coleman's property has brought such a light to the community. I mean, I gather with people that I probably would have never gathered with. And just to see him bring us together as a community and a people is just very heartwarming because that's just not something that you see. So, you know, moving forward, Coleman, I just want to let you know that I really do appreciate you. And a lot of us over there on not only Monroe, that, that area touches all the houses. And that, they all know about Webster. The kids, their faces light up when they hear about his program. And they don't even, some of them don't even know how to count. I'm just not going to sugarcoat it. But they know Coleman. So it was just really good to hear, you know, you guys' approval. I know, like I said, I'm not, yeah. But as a resident in that area and coming from other black communities that are just completely dead with just nothing to do, you know, that is just very enlightening. So hats off to you and I appreciate you guys a lot. Go ahead. Now, I don't want to be the thorn, but I got ax. So you talked about mayor, you guys had other pilot programs that just didn't work out due to management. Now, I'm not aware, but I wanted to know, like, do you guys have like plans moving forward for landlords or programs that are still renting and are not meeting those management and, you know, proper requirements? I live in 59 Monroe and it's literally New Jack City. And not a lot of the requirements are being made. And there's been a lot of promises. The code management did come out and he did, you know, take down. But I want to know, like, is there going to be things moving forward? Because, I mean, this is what the eighth landlord I rented from in Pontiac that's allowed to have housing or low income and they collect checks. And it's like we live in the middle of a rainforest. Like it's, nothing is being done. I, I'm not trying to be a thorn in your side, but this is something that me and the communities, yes, I get on in low house, you know, income housing. Unfortunately, I do pay for it. I'm not saying you're not deserving, but we shouldn't have to live in trash. And then year after year, you're making forty-seven thousand on a property and there's water coming out of the ceiling. So I just, I just wanted to know, is there going to be some change, some shifts? Or are you guys working on it? I don't know if it's a pilot, but I just wanted to ask because ninety percent of the building does receive Section A. So that was just a question I had.
Vern, do you want to comment at all on that?
I know that we have been, two things. I can speak in regard from a code enforcement standpoint. We have been out there and identifying those type of issues and that also bringing it forth to the building department. Building Department has been looking and working on going through rental registrations, rental inspections and the like. And, and our code enforcement team has been bringing it forth to them through building. So we're seeing a definite process that has been more fluid than maybe than what you're, everybody is expecting. But we're seeing a better process because of who we have on board to kind of make sure that from that initial effort to something that's final, that we can hang our hat on to move it forward to create better living spaces for that community or for the residents.
And I do see you guys as, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I was gonna, oh, no, please, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, ask Vern in regards to that. Just listening to what you're saying, that renters are actually, renters are actually collecting checks.
Yeah.
And so somehow we need to involve Section Eight in that where they need to be the ones who actually are correcting that and making sure that those checks do not come to renters that are not keeping up their property.
The maximum they receive at my apartment is seven, between seven and eight hundred a month. And that's money guaranteed from Section A. So whether such and such, that's money in the bank. So it's like a handful of us that I pay seven hundred.
Is there some place that people in the city who have issues like this should call? Or?
We've called them all. The state's been out there five times. We've called code management. We've put in complaints. We've had sign sheets, all types of things that we've done. I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm just saying I've seen the same reaction. And I just can't understand why I'm living in a building where you're able to make fifty grand and there's mold growing in my bathroom. That's unacceptable.
Yes.
Unacceptable.
And you're a landlord and you live in Florida? No. That's unacceptable. I'm not saying it's Pontiac's problem, but I'm saying this is, and it's not just Monroe. It's multiple properties I've seen. They're collecting bank, living good, traveling good, which I respect it. But something needs to be done.
No, we're way over protocol and I've been the worst. We don't respond to people for public comment, but I mean, this is so provocative.
Yeah.
One of the things that is important to solve the problem of substandard housing is for people to have choices. Where there is no choices, where there's limited housing, you have no choices, then you, you know, may end up in places like that where you have landlords who victimize you. Something that we have undertaken as code enforcement, which can report things if you're living in substandard housing because there are certain codes here that this, this code enforcement department is empowered to enforce. But that's why when people come here with projects, we're so happy for the building that's going on. We have the first duplexes going up in 20 years because that gives people choices. You don't have to take just substandard things. So that's why we're proud on this commission that looks at the quality of housing that goes up here and when there are things that we think are too, too small or too, not amenities that people should have to be proud of and live in, this commission does stand up and say, no, we have to have certain standards. So those are the choices. We're going to have a lot of choices as we have more and more housing. You saw two that are going up just from today. And there's more that's going up all around.
All right, thank you.
That's what we want to have.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can, I couldn't, you know, because I lost my voice. First, I want to just commend you on the planning commission because what you do is you change people's lives by giving them opportunities to have choices, as the mayor said earlier. I also want to just, not just only thank Coleman Yocum, but thank the community as a whole because it's going to take the community to change the City of Pontiac. And lastly, I just want to leave you with a quote. It says, "Affordable housing brings stability to the economic diversity and improves the physical quality of life for all involved." As a Pontiac Housing Commissioner, as a library board member, as a person from the south side, I applaud you guys for taking and making the hard choices. The, I don't need you to clap, this is real. The necessary choices because it takes true leadership to make a difference. So I hope that as you have this checks and balances that you have about the public and private sector, as you have these checks and balances that you have about the Webster, that you also have the checks and balances about the landlords as well as the people who are in code enforcement. Because sometimes people make mistakes and people, families get, have to move and they get hurt by people who have emotion, who don't use emotional intelligence. And so I just want you to commend you on what you do and to continue to use emotional intelligence about the decisions that you're making. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If there's no other public comments, I'm gonna.
May, real quick.
Yeah.
I just want to say, well, not just want to say, but I'm going to say, the last master plan we did was a suggestion. It was to be service, a guideline, sort of an outline from, a summary from the community to the mayor and the legislators about changes and things that should be done, how to institute ordinances, revamp ordinances. And there are a lot of things that didn't happen, a lot of things that did happen. So some of the conversations we've had here tonight, I think also needs to be repeated again with the council. And hopefully we can upgrade this as, as we're making decisions about who to vote for. What do the people that we're looking at voting for know? And where are they? And what are their thoughts on these items? Because what's happened here tonight is very good, very good. But we need to keep it going.
Can I make a comment, a public comment?
Sure, I'll be quick. I just want to say I'm also a huge fan of Coleman. I live across, I live on West Yeracuy. My name's Roz Hard again. I live on West Yeracuy, right across the street from Sprouts. And that's how we first met Coleman as the owner of Sprouts. I was very, very excited to see Sprouts established because the loss of Three Sisters was like such a blow to that whole neighborhood. To me personally, it was such a terrible loss. And, and that kind of really completed just the huge loss of all those buildings and businesses along that, that several block corridor there. So to me, it was really exciting to see someone really come in and establish like a food presence there that continued to be an anchor for other businesses. The, the apartment building next door now is being refurbished and it's going to be reopened for business, I assume. And, but one of the things that I always admired most that Coleman managed to organize for his neighborhood was to have the sidewalks ground down. was to have the sidewalks ground down so that they're smooth. Because these are all very old sidewalks, you know, 80, 90 years old and the tree roots have caused them to buckle. So they're not good for strollers or wheelchairs or anything. But he organized having them ground down so they're nice and smooth. And that brings me to my unkind of related comment about why I originally moved to Pontiac, which was, it's a very walkable city. And it's one of the few, I, I moved from Connecticut and I lived in Boston and Connecticut my whole life before moving here. And those are, you know, New Haven and Boston are both very small cities that are entirely built around pedestrians. And it was a real shock to me to come to Michigan and see that everything is in service of the almighty automobile in terms of how people move around and how they build their lives. So, but Pontiac's not like that, because it's an older community and it's built, it's just a smaller, more friendly, walkable, every, every place in sidewalk, every place in Pontiac has a sidewalk. Whereas many other cities, there's just subdivisions where you can't walk at all, you just have to drive your car everywhere. So I just want to say that hopefully going forward, that is something that we continue to appreciate. I still appreciate, I've walked all over Pontiac, spent many hours every week walking and exploring and it's just a delightful place to, to be a pedestrian. So I hope that's something that we can keep, build on going forward. Thanks, Burn.
Mayor Waterman, did you have any announcements you wanted to make or? No, okay. All right, go ahead.
I would just like to offer my condolences to the Russell family, Frank Russell and his family. And I'd like for all of, all of us to keep them in prayer. And anything that we can do or for them, let's try and do that as a community, because he was certainly lost, a great man in regards to the community. He will make sure that the communications flow through Pontiac and a lot of other things that he was really known for. So our condolences to you.
Thank you. Okay, I am going to close.
Go ahead. I'm just, I just, I just got to get this off my chest. I, I want everybody to join me over at Hawthorne Park on Saturday, September 11th. We're having a, two things, a great opportunity to come together in regard, remembrance in regards to 20 years of 9/11. But also to see what the city and Driftwood Creek Disc Golf Club has constructed a championship 18-hole disc golf course at Hawthorne Park. Starting at 9:30, great little program, just kind of as a remembrance and to celebrate. And you'll get giveaways and discs emblazoned with that remembrance on it. And please join us for a couple of hours worth of playing golf and celebrating and also remembering in a very kind and a very affectionate way. Thank you.
And if I may add, I did have the opportunity, early when they started, they laid out a few holes and there are some very, very interesting disc golf holes. So if you do attend, I can guarantee you'll have a very good time.
Okay, I am going to close public comments and may I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yay.
Thank you for coming out.